Good evening, I'm calling to order the meeting of the Arlington Select Board for Monday, January tenth, two thousand and twenty-two. This is Select Board Chair Steve De Corsi. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Diane Mahan?
Yes.
John Hurd?
Yes.
Len Diggins?
Yes.
Eric Helmut?
Yes.
Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Adam Chapdeline?
Yes.
Doug Heim?
Yes.
And Board Administrator Ashley Maher is participating remotely. Tonight's meeting of the Arlington Select Board is being conducted remotely, consistent with an act signed into law on June sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, that extends certain COVID-nineteen measures adopted during the state of emergency. The act includes an extension until April one, two thousand and twenty-two, of the remote meeting provisions of Governor Baker's March twelfth, two thousand and twenty executive order, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. Governor's order, which is referenced with Agenda Materials on the town's website for this meeting, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely, so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Before we begin, permit me to offer a few notes. First, this meeting is being conducted via Zoom, is being recorded, and is also being simultaneously broadcast on ACMI. Persons wishing to join the meeting by Zoom may find information on how to do so on the town's website. Persons participating by Zoom are reminded that they may be visible to others, and that if you wish to participate, you are asked to provide your full name in the interest of developing a record of the meeting. All participants are advised that people may be listening who do not provide comment, and those persons are not required to identify themselves. Both Zoom participants and persons watching on ACMI can follow the posted Agenda Materials, also found on the town's website, using the Novus Agenda platform. Finally, each vote tonight will be taken by roll call. This is the first scheduled meeting of the Select Board for calendar year two thousand and twenty-two. Let's see how much of the town's business we can get done tonight. Before I turn to item two on the agenda, I would like to read the land acknowledgement that the board supported last spring in town meeting approved through a resolution, and which is also contained on the town's website. "We acknowledge that the town of Arlington is located on the ancestral lands of the Massachusetts Tribe, the tribe of indigenous peoples from whom the colony, province, and Commonwealth have taken their names. We pay our respects to the ancestral bloodline of the Massachusetts Tribe and their descendants who still inhabit historic Massachusetts territories today." I will now turn to item two on tonight's agenda, the consent agenda. There is one item this evening, the minutes of the meeting of December twentieth, two thousand and twenty-one. This is the regular meeting of December twentieth, two thousand and twenty-one, and I'll start with Mrs. Mahan.
Move approval, no questions.
Thank you. Mr. Hurd?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Diggins?
No comments.
Mr. Helmut?
No comments.
Okay, on motion by Mrs. Mahan, seconded by Mr. Hurd, Attorney Heim?
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Mr. Helmut?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes.
Mr. De Corsi?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you. Item number three for approval, establishment of Veterans Memorial Park gift account. Jeffrey Chunglo, Director of Veteran Services, is Mr. Chunglo with us this evening, Mr. Chapdeline?
Yes, he is. I just promoted him to panelist. Here he is.
Good evening, Mr. Chunglo. He's just about with us. Good evening, Mr. Chunglo.
Good evening. As soon as I clicked "Join the Meeting," it rebooted for a second, so I'm sorry about that. But first of all, thanks for having me participate, and I hope everyone enjoyed the holidays and Happy New Year.
You as well.
So I was bounced out when you had started your discussion, so I'm not sure exactly what was mentioned before I signed back in.
Yeah, I just introduced the item, so if you could tell us about establishing the account and where we're of the... We had voted earlier, well, last year actually, just before Veterans Day, to create or keep the park, the memorial park, near the fire station. But if you could tell us about the gift count and what you're looking for from us this evening?
Sure. So I had planned to do this anyways in the future, once we started collecting funds for the new Veterans Memorial Park. I recently had a veteran pass away, World War II veteran Catherine Adler, who was ninety-nine. She passed away last week, so in lieu of flowers, she requested that donations be made to Department of Veteran Services. So I reached out to Rita to establish the process for establishing a budget item or line item for donations for the park to establish that new account. So I have received a number of checks, and it's a good starting place for the new Veterans Memorial Park. And I just asked that you accept the proposal to establish that new account.
Attorney Heim, just a question on, is it just a vote that we need to establish the account? Is there anything else that we need, any other further action that we need this evening?
Sure. I don't think there's a further action that the board will need to take. There may be some further action that needs to be taken by... The board essentially, the primary function is to accept funds either by donation or grant, any conditions that are tied to them, and make sure they're acceptable in terms of who they're being received from. This is the sort of primary keykeeping functions the board serves. But in this particular case, I think at this juncture, what Mr. Chunglo is describing is the only action that the board needs to take.
Okay, thank you, Attorney Heim. I will turn to the board now. I'll start with Mr. Hurd.
Miss Chair, I'd like to move to approve the request to establish an account to accept gift funds for the new Veterans Memorial Park, and I look forward to what becomes of it. And again, Mr. Chunglo, thank you for all your work that you do and your advocacy on the issue for our veterans in town.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hurd. Mr. Diggins?
I'd like to second that. Please, again, Mr. Chunglo, who was the person who asked that donations be made in lieu of...
Yes. So it was the family of Catherine Adler. So she was a Marine Corps veteran, World War II, had a very storied career, set some milestones, and so it was her family that requested that the donations be made.
Yeah, I mean, World War II, we love to know more about that story and certainly appreciate what her family is doing in this realm. So once again, I'm happy to second the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Diggins. Mr. Helmut?
Thank you. I enthusiastically support the motion and express my gratitude to Ms. Adler's family for her service and for honoring her memory of her service in this wonderful way.
Thank you, Mr. Helmut. Mrs. Mahan?
Thank you, Miss Chair. I don't have any questions because I know our Veteran Services director will have this running smoothly and promptly, as with everything else he does. And I'm also grateful for, there's a lot of contacts that Mr. Chunglo does just silently, and we probably wouldn't even have known about this one, but for this account being established and the generosity of the Adler family, and we thank her for her service and her family, because as anyone who's married to or related to a military spouse, it really is also a family sacrifice. So as always, the board is available to you, Mr. Chunglo, with any help that you need. And you've always kept us in the loop and apprised of what's going on, and we'll all be your biggest advocate, so thank you to everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Mahan. Yeah, and I support this as well. I believe Ms. Adler may have been ninety-nine years old when she passed. She, her relatives, the McNamara family in Arlington, Gert McNamara's younger sister, and I condolences to the family, but also I had heard about Ms. Adler's service, and I did want to thank the family as well for identifying the Veterans Services for the gift account. So on a motion by Mr. Hurd, seconded by Mr. Diggins, Attorney Heim?
Hurd?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Mr. Helmut?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes.
Mr. De Corsi?
Yes.
It's unanimous vote.
Thank you, Mr. Chunglo.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
You too. Okay, item four, board discussion, removal of double polls. The board will recall that I started a practice that if EverSource or Verizon comes in, that we have an update on the double poll situation in town, and I do have some news to report. When I first had made this an agenda item back in October, I had cited statistics from October thirty-one, two thousand and twenty. Where according to the DPU report that Verizon filed, or the report filed with the Department of Public Utilities, there were one hundred and forty-eight double polls as of October thirty-one, two thousand and twenty. As of October thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-one, that number is one hundred and fourteen double polls, so there is progress being made. However, there is a detailed list that is provided, or that Verizon provides to the DPW by community, and we're going to post that in the town and ask for a vote to post that on the town's website and ask residents to take a look at it and add any of the locations that are missing, because that look, that that report that shows one hundred and fourteen double polls shows two double polls on Mass Ave. I use that as a sample. If you drive the length of Mass Ave, there are at least seven double polls. So there are some gaps in the reporting, and so while on the one hand, we're pleased to see that there has been some positive progress, I think there's some real questions on the completeness of the double poll report, and the double poll that I had pointed out at the meeting back in October on the corner of Adams Street in Mass Ave, probably the worst one in the town, doesn't appear on the double poll list, so that explains why it hasn't been removed. So what I'd like the board to consider, and if I could ask the town manager, ACMI ran a story about this back in November. On their November twelfth newscast, they actually reached out to Verizon for a comment on the number of double polls, and this is the response that they had received. I want to thank ACMI for the completeness of the story, but Verizon responded that they're currently up to date for all their double poll work in Arlington, and essentially that the reason that the double polls haven't been replaced is that they're awaiting work from other parties, and the town manager and I have spoken about this, and I think it's, we should request, or think about requesting, and I'll open it up to the board, a meeting with representatives from Verizon, EverSource, RCN, and Comcast. They are the parties that would have wires on the polls, just to get an understanding as to what the communication is and what happens, because for the primary party to say that they're currently up to date when there are one hundred and fourteen polls and aren't in compliance with the statute, I think we need to do better in terms of what the communication is. So with that background, I will turn to the board, and I'll start with Mr. Diggins.
Sorry about the delay, Miss Chair. Well, clearly, there's an issue, meaning, and so I support in your pursuit of this matter. And is there a motion that you want to come out of this?
If you would like. I mean, I suggested action to request a meeting with the parties and to also publish the list and ask residents to report back if any of these sites are missing.
Well, I certainly support that, and I'm happy to make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Diggins. Any other comments?
No comments.
Okay. Mr. Helmut?
Thank you. I'm very glad to second that. I think that, you know, I appreciate Verizon's response, but I think the danger for this, when you have multiple parties, is that they can all wait for the other and point fingers at the other, and, you know, that does not serve the residents of the town very well at all. So I think both having this meeting and inviting the citizens to help with this tracking and accountability is a really good idea, and I want to thank the chair for refocusing the board's and the town's attention on the double polls each time that the utilities come for us for necessary approvals.
Thank you, Mr. Helmut. Mrs. Mahan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Has it been seconded?
Yes, I believe Mr. Helmut seconded.
I apologize. I was reading the teeny little print on this, and I wasn't focusing, so my apologies. I think it's definitely a good idea. We're going to post this double poll grid document that you've provided the rest of the board with, and is it my understanding we're going to ask residents, I have two-part question on that. I'm going to ask residents to report directly to the town if they don't see their double poll or no other double poll that isn't on this list, and/or I know residents will, some residents might say, well, I want to send something directly to, you know, Verizon or whomever, or is it, we just want to gather this information and go forth from there?
Yeah, I spoke to the town manager about posting, I think maybe in the first instances, to report to the town. Certainly, people could contact Verizon if they want, but I also want to let the public know that the list that we're going to publish is actually a list that Verizon files with DPU. It is a public document. So what we're reporting is a matter of public record already, but I think it, Mr. Chapdeline, maybe you could respond. I think if, we'd like the public maybe to reach out through us so that we can reach out to Verizon to suggest corrections to the list if there need to be corrections.
I think that sounds right. We could either designate a staff member to receive those emails or even set up an inbox specifically for this purpose and direct people to send an email stating the location of the poll, and we can double-check the list.
Okay, and I definitely support the various party joint meeting that the chair is suggesting to us. I don't think we need to vote on that. That's just something that the chair would schedule. I just would put it out there. Would it be beneficial to have, or maybe first communicate with a cable advisory committee chairperson, where we are bringing in some of these cable companies, they may say they would be valuable there. They may just want to send in a statement, and then the other thing is, I mean, this is for something for the chair and the town manager to sort of room discuss about, is should we perhaps, at that meeting, invite our legislative delegation? That's just a thought, not saying it has to happen, so, and thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Mahan, and I'll follow up with you on that point, maybe as we go forward, once we get a response from the various companies in terms of timing. Mr. Hurd?
Thank you. Happy to support the motion, and thank you for your continued advocacy on this issue. Just one question on the chart that we had sent, the shorter of the two. So there's two categories, the jointly owned polls, it looks like, and one has EverSource and Verizon, the other one just hasn't flipped. So is there significance to who is owner number one? Do they have, are they kind of, who we would have to talk to to get the poll removed?
Yeah, and maybe, Mr. Chapdeline, you can fill in maybe. My understanding is that in different communities, whether it's Verizon or EverSource or another utility, where they're joint owners, one of the companies is given primary responsibility for maintaining the double polls or replacing them. In Arlington's case, it's Verizon, so that's why they, we do see, there is twenty-eight polls now that are, that say EverSource is the primary owner, but my understanding is Verizon has primary responsibility in Arlington to gather the other companies when a poll is being replaced. Is that right, Mr. Chapdeline?
Yes, that's accurate.
Okay.
Okay, so I was just going to note that it looks like Verizon's responsibility is lacking on their responsibilities more than EverSource, but the eighty-nine polls that they're primary on, but thank you for the explanation. Happy to support the motion.
Great. Thank you. So on a motion by Mr. Diggins, seconded by Mr. Helmut, a two-part motion, Attorney Heim?
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Mr. Helmut?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes.
Mr. De Corsi?
Yes.
It's unanimous vote.
Thank you. Okay, so we did list at seven-thirty, public hearings. It's now seven-thirty-six. We will do these in order, and we will start with item number five, EverSource petition from Massachusetts Avenue, Jaclyn Duffy, Supervisor of Rights and Permits. And while we're waiting for Ms. Duffy to join us, I do want to point out that she appeared before us in October. Within a day, no more than two days after the meeting, she did reach out to EverSource and I believe reached out to Verizon about the poll on Adams Street and on Mass Ave, as well as the other one across from Elmsworth Road. So I want to thank Ms. Duffy for taking the initiative after the last meeting, and I want to welcome her to the hearing if she can hear us.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
How are you? I had sent, I had sent an email to Verizon after that meeting that we had, and I never received a response. I believe it was before a storm that we were going to get because that poll was so badly damaged, and I never got a response back. I believe I sent it to Diane to show her that I sent it to them. I don't know what's going on with Verizon.
Yeah, no, actually, while you were signing on, I thanked you for doing that, because I was aware that you had reached out after the last meeting.
Yes. It was switching me over to be a panelist. That's why I didn't hear you.
Okay, all right. Yeah, no, no, thank you for doing that, and we as well haven't heard anything, so we will continue to try to do that. So on the petition, I believe this relates to work that needs to be done for Arlington High School. If you could tell us a little bit about the petition and the work that's proposed to be done?
Yes, we're requesting to install fourteen-hundred-and-eighty feet of conduit, and this is to accommodate the Arlington High School.
Okay, I will turn to the board, and I'll start with Mr. Helmut.
Thank you. I'd like to move approval, and I have no questions.
Mrs. Mahan?
I would like to second that and just say to Ms. Duffy, as the chairman noted as you were switching over, I had shared the information that Ms. Duffy had sent me the next day with the chair and the town manager. And I know they acted on that, and unfortunately, they've gotten the same response that you have, Jackie, which is nothing, crickets, but we're just going to keep on keeping on so we can get to the bottom of this. But I do want to thank Ms. Duffy for, I know she even, as Mr. De Corsi, the chair, said, sent some pictures that the chair had included as information, so we do appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Mahan. Mr. Hurd?
Support it. No questions.
Mr. Diggins?
Thank you, Miss Chair. I do support it. I have a couple of questions, I mean, I think this will go to the town manager through you, Mr. Chair, if that's okay?
Yeah.
Nice to meet you. So I assume that this one, this engineering memo is done by Mr. Chenard. I noticed the other two were, but there's no name associated with this one. I assume he does them all.
I mean, I would assume the same, Mr. Diggins, though it's certainly possible that Mr. Coppethorn could stand in if necessary to draft a memo.
I got you, you know, so that's fine, because I know that both of those are very detailed oriented. I notice that these are, I mean, they're detailed, but a little boilerplate-y too, meaning, so I trust him to make sure that anything that is different in these to be addressed in particular will be done. And the second one is, I noticed that it's like if any brick sidewalk or any sidewalk is removed, it'll be replaced with brick sidewalk. I take it that we have to replace it with whatever was there initially, right?
Yeah, I'm not familiar with any brick sidewalk in that location, so that must be carried over from another memo.
Okay, all right, so but to the question that I was really getting at, though, it's like, so we would have to replace it with what was there, though, right?
We usually try to do like-for-like, yes.
Okay, all right, all right, thank you. That's it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Diggins. Just one question, and this is for the town manager, maybe for Attorney Heim. We do have a list of conditions, and typically we'll make the approval subject to the conditions, but condition nine refers to the construction moratorium, and I don't know if that's something that is just being put in there to make us aware of that data. And this work needs to be done before the new high school opens, so to the extent that that is there, I want to suggest, and ask the manager if he believes this would be appropriate to waive that condition for this project, because they may have to do work in the public way between now and when the school opens in February.
I would agree. I think waiving that condition makes sense, and it would track with precedent on other projects. Engineering and other board has waived or put the construction moratorium, the winter construction moratorium on hiatus for expediting gas leaks repairs or gas main replacement to repair gas leaks or to affect the timely installation of infrastructure, and this would fall under that category.
Okay, great. All right. I don't have any further questions. I just want to ask, Mr. Helmut, if, wouldn't mind making a friendly amendment for the conditions, with the exception of that one, number nine?
Yes, good catch. Thank you.
And if, Mrs. Mahan, if that's acceptable for the second?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chung.
Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing, so if members of the public wish to be heard on this item five, we will open it up right now. I don't know if there's anybody who has signaled they want to address the board on this one.
I am not seeing any hands raised at this time.
Okay, all right. So on item number five, on a motion for approval by Mr. Helmut, seconded by Mrs. Mahan, Attorney Heim?
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Mr. Helmut?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes.
Mrs. De Corsi?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Duffy.
Could I just say one thing? When you said like-for-like, yes, we do replace like-for-like. If it is a brick sidewalk, we have those a lot in Cambridge. Just to let you know, it is alike, we do replace like-for-like.
Okay, thank you for that information.
You're welcome.
Have a good evening.
You too.
Okay, items number six and seven are National Grid petitions. I am consistent with my prior practice. I am going to recuse myself from participation in each of these items, item six and seven, because of legal work that I do for National Grid. So I'm going to turn the meeting over to Mrs. Mahan at this point for these two items.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for passing the virtual gavel. Now we have two petitions for National Grid. I believe it says, Ms. Mary Mulrooney will be representing. Is she on the list?
She is joining us by phone, and if you're ready, I can allow her to address the board.
Yes. And I'll say the first, number six, is the National Grid petition, Oakland Avenue, and Ms. Mulrooney, whenever you're ready.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. Which petition would you like to start with?
If it's okay, the Oakland Avenue?
Sure. National Grid respectfully requests your consent to install and maintain fifty-five feet of four-inch plastic main from the existing four-inch cast iron main to service a new house at two ninety-two Oakland Ave and Arlington. And from that main extension, they will install a new two-inch plastic service to the point of entry of the home.
Okay, thank you. First, any questions for my colleague? I'd like to start with Mr. Diggins.
No questions. Are you entertaining motions now, Miss Chair? Yeah. I'll be happy to make a motion to approve this on request.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Helmut?
Thank you. I second the motion. No questions.
Thank you. I second the motion. No questions.
Mr. Heard?
No questions. Thank you.
Um, I also have no questions. I, I just would ask Ms. Mulrooney, um, I don't know if you, um, were able to hear the comment we had under the double pole uh, conversation initiated by the chairman, Mr. DeCoursey, and, and speaking about an upcoming meeting. To try to get everybody together to sort of cycle this out.
Um, okay, what was that in regards to?
Uh, the double pole issue that we've, every time we've had the utilities come in, we started, the chair started back in, um, October um, about really trying to address the double pole issue, and it's, it's sort of a, like the hot potato game. And, uh, we really wanna come to sort of a meeting of the minds and come to a, a working plan to actually start to address this, recognizing that we have the utility companies, the cable companies, and National Grid. Um, so that was discussed a couple of agenda items before you, so I just wanted to give you a heads up on that.
Okay, even though, um, we're natural gas or in the ground.
Oh, that's right, national grid. I'm sorry, then you don't have to worry about double poles. And this is some of the ground I don't know about. I had a computer. Um, this is a public hearing. Um, Mr. Chaplin, I'd like to open it up and ask if anyone from the public would like to speak.
So there is one hand raised, um, uh, butter Heidi Neck. And I see the name of another butter who had reached out to me previously, uh, Mr. Romar. So if, if he is, uh, listening and like, would like to speak, he could raise his hand as well, but with your approval, Chair, I would, um, actually, if you're okay, I'll promote both Heidi and Mr. Romar to speak.
Yes, please. And if, um, we could start with Ms. Neck, um, if she's on, or whoever comes on first.
Yep, she is, yep.
Hi, my name is Heidi Neck. I just abut the property at two ninety-two Oakland. And I'm just curious, is this standard operating procedure? Is there anything I need to be worried about? Any safety issues?
Um, you, you left the National Grid or the, um, board?
Probably National Grid is in a better position to answer this question.
No, there, there'd be nothing to worry about. This is standard procedure all the time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone else want to add to that? Um, Mr. Chaplin?
I do think Mr. Romar had a few questions, if I, so I would promote him if that would just, okay?
Okay. And if he can just say his name and address for the record when he's on.
Okay, sorry, at Don Mute. Thank you for the opportunity to address the board. We are a butters at two ninety Oakland Avenue. We have no objection to the extension of the line. We simply had several questions about how we would be impacted while the construction takes place. For example, we'll be able to have access and egress from our driveway. The current line ends right at the middle of our driveway. So it would seem to me National Grid has to dig there, and we're wondering about their access and egress, how that construction takes place. Second is, um, will we be notified prior to construction so that we can prepare? Thirdly, will we have to have our gas appliances shut off for any duration? That would be an impact for us also. And that's pretty much the essence of our questions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Romar. I guess I would ask Ms. Mulrooney to speak to your three questions around access and egress during the construction project, um, notification during the project, and as well as your question regarding gas appliances, whether they need to be altered in any way. Ms. Mulrooney?
Yes, um, Mr. Roma, um, National Grid, this is a small job, so it shouldn't take that long. Um, I'm, I'm guessing, I'm erring on the side of caution, and I'm gonna say, um, two days, but I really believe that it's probably gonna be one day. Um, and you would be accommodated, like, if you need to get in and out of your driveway, the crew that is on the site, um, will always make sure that, that you're notified as they go, and if you need to get out for an emergency or something, the, the crew will probably have plates there, and, and will always make sure that you can get out of your driveway. And if they will notify you, um, prior to the work, I'm gonna make that, um, put that in one of the notes. And, um, as far as your appliances, no, um, you'd be, if they needed to, they'd get in touch with you, but no, you'll be fine. It will have no impact on anybody on the street.
Okay, that's very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roma.
Um, I don't see any other hands from the public. So what I will do is to, uh, motion to approve by Mr. Diggins, seconded by Mr. Helmuth, Attorney Heim.
Mr. Heard?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Mr. Helmuth?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes.
It's a four-zero vote. I'll note that Mr. DeCoursey recused himself.
Thank you. I still can't believe I dropped double poles up to National Grid. Oh, today, I, um, the next, um, uh, double National Grid petition, uh, is from Mass Ave. Um, Ms. Mulrooney?
Yes. Um, hi. National Grid respectfully requests, um, the town of Arlington to give us permission to go in. It's three hundred feet in all, but it's, we're looking for twenty-five feet of six-inch coated steel main extending from the six-inch plastic main in Mass Ave, um, in Arlington. The main will be installed from Mass Ave through the shared driveway and into the development property. Install fifty feet of four-inch plastic to service, service to serve building number four within the development at one sixty-five, uh, Massachusetts Avenue, Arlington. Building four serves building one and building three to install approximately fifty feet of two-inch plastic to serve buildings two with the development of eleven sixty-five Massachusetts Ave. Um, so it's like three hundred feet in total. But it's a small section is in Mass Ave, and the rest, um, is on private property, a shared driveway.
Okay, thank you. Um, I'd like to start with Mr. Helmuth.
Thank you. Um, I'll move approval subject to conditions, but I did want to reference the engineering report's note uh, for this property, saying that the request wrongly identifies the granite location for the entirety of the gra- gas infrastructure required, and advises select board to only consider the request for that portion of the gas main located within the public right-of-way, uh, which is approximately forty-five, and it looks like there might have been a typo in the memo, and so it didn't continue in forty-five. Um, but I, so I wanted to ask, uh, perhaps the town manager, if that's okay, Ms., Ms. Chair, um, for clarification on that.
Certainly, Mr. Chaplin.
Mr. Helmuth specifically asking if, if that's acceptable, uh, in terms of?
Yeah, yeah, if I, if I'm understanding this correctly, and, and I think, um, and I apologize that I just didn't catch this before, totally before the meeting, um, that, um, if, if this is still a current recommendation, um, as far as you know, from, from the town engineer, that we only consider the request for the public, for the portion located within the public right-of-way. Um, and then I guess my specific question is, uh, just finishing the sentence, when it says it is approximately forty-five, um, and then the memo leaves off, maybe it's feet, or linear feet, I'm, I'm not sure what the, what the figure is, and, and, um, I terrible for me to not see this before and bring this up right on the spot, but I think we need to get it, we need to get it right.
So I, I would have to consult with engineering to know what the remainder of that sentence is, whether it's forty-five or forty-five hundred. I, I don't know. As, as to the first question, I would imagine that is still appropriate, as I think we can only grant the, you know, we can only, the board can only issue a grant of location for a private way and nothing, nothing else.
Yeah, well, so, so, so that, I think, the, the typo probably doesn't matter, then if we, um, and maybe, you know, if, if you, the town council have an opinion on this, but I think if I move that we, uh, we approve the, the, the portion of the gas main located within the public right-of-way, that, would that be sufficient in this case?
I believe it would be. Um, Attorney Heim, do you think that's acceptable?
So I'm sorry, Mr. Helmuth, my understanding is that you're, wanna limit the motion specifically so that the only thing the board is approving is that which is clearly under its jurisdiction, the public.
That's right.
I mean, I, I certainly don't have any objection to that. I don't know if National Grid has a
position on. Ask them next, yeah.
Position on that, but, um, you know, you, you are the arbiters of certainly the public way. You're arbiters with private ways with respect to certain things, and you did serve as the Board of Survey historically. Um, uh, but I'd be curious to see whether National Grid had any perspective on whether or not it's material that we vote on property that isn't really, uh, the town's, uh, and what its experience with that has been.
Yeah, yeah, and I would, I, I would invite that as well, and just note that, you know, I'm, I'm just responding to the advice, um, from Mr. Charnard in the, in the, in the memo, so. Yeah, uh, but if National should get us a view on, on that, um, be glad to hear that now.
Um, Ms. Mulrooney?
Yes. Go ahead. Sorry.
It's okay, you go ahead.
You, um, um, you wanna know about the private driveway versus, um, the opening, um, extending like twenty-five, probably to forty-five feet. They probably erring on the side of caution with forty-five feet um, of the public way? Is, is that what you're asking?
Yeah, I think, I think our question is, uh, the, the, the town engineer recommended that, um, noted, noted that the request identifies the granite location for the entirety of the gas infrastructure, and just noted that the board only has jurisdiction over the public right-of-way. Um, and advises that we should only consider the request for the portion of the gas main located within the public right-of-way, which is about forty-five feet, which is, you know, what we can do. And, um, just wanted to make sure that, you know, I, I, I'm gonna make the motion that we approve that within those, within the public right-of-way, but to make sure that wasn't a, an unforeseen issue or concern you had about that.
No, there shouldn't be, because, um, it, it's on a private driveway, a shared private driveway, and that would be up to the, the owners to deal with National Grid, knowing that it's going down there. But, um, it's, I, I always feel it's better to let you know, even though it was a small section of Mass Ave, I always like to include everything so that, that, you know, everybody has the, the general knowledge of it. But yes, no, it should be fine.
Okay, great. Thank you. So, um, so on that, yeah, I think I'll just repeat my motion to move approval subject to recommendations and conditions in the, in the engineering memo, and, and with the further stipulation that this approval um, is for the public, portion of the gas main located within the public right-of-way. Thank you, Mr.
Thank you, Mr. Helmuth. Um, Mr. Heard?
Thank Mr. Helmuth for his diligence on his motion, um, and I would like to second that.
Um, thank you, Mr. Diggins.
Yes, there's nothing left to say on this one. I'm happy to approve.
Um, for myself, um, ditto. Um, there's a public hearing, um, at this time, if there are any, and I will note all the butters have been notified. Um, I guess I would ask the town manager, Mr. Chaplin, if anyone has indicated from the public that'd like to speak.
Do not see any hands raised right now, Madam Chair.
Okay, so with that, on a uh, motion by Mr. Helmuth, seconded by Mr. Heard, Attorney Heim?
Mr. Heard?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Mr. Helmuth?
Yes.
Mahan?
Yes.
It's a four-zero vote with Mr. DeCoursey recusing himself.
Great. And this time, I will pass the gavel back to the chairman. Mr. DeCoursey, thank you.
Thank, thank you, Mrs. Mahan. Um, we will now move
Thank you very much.
We, we will now move to item, agenda item eight. Uh, American Rescue Plan Act Investment in Equity and Outreach Proposed Expenditure Plan and ARPA Investment in Water and Sewer Infrastructure Proposed Expenditure Plan. Uh, Mr. Chaplin will be presenting along with Jillian Harvey, the Director of Diversity, Equity and Inclusion, and Mr. Roda Marker, um, Michael Roda Marker, Director of Public Works.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Your, your timing worked out very well with saying their names as their faces appeared on screen. It was almost like we choreographed them. Um, so quickly, before we dive into the details of each of these proposals, I did wanna take this opportunity to inform the board as well as the viewing public that last week the final rule for ARPA was issued by Federal Treasury, uh, which was a multi-hundred-page document that in many ways we are still combing through. But there was a top-line change of significant importance to Arlington and many cities and towns across the country. And that was a change from requiring us to justify a revenue loss to be able to use any ARPA funds for general fund benefit. Shifting that to saying that cities and towns under a population of two hundred and fifty thousand, which we qualify as, and with a grant total greater than ten million, which we qualify as, can claim up to ten million dollars in revenue loss without justification. We had set aside, um, as you probably recall, in the framework, three million dollars for being able to claim revenue loss in case there was a change in the rule that would allow us to do so. Um, obviously, this is a better result in terms of the support that we can provide to the general fund, though it will prompt, um, me and I think others to want to revisit the framework to see where we could potentially reduce previously proposed investments to be able to increase benefit to the general fund. So there's more to come on that. I thought it was important to lead with that tonight, uh, because, because of that fact, we'll only be asking for one discrete portion of the funds that were requested by Mr. Roda Marker to give us a chance to do a deeper analysis, um, as opposed to the entirety of the expenditures that were outlined in the water sewer memo. I would hope to be able to come back to the board by its next meeting in January, or at the latest, its first meeting in February, to bring forth, um, either a recommended option or potentially even several options for a revised framework that would take this change into account. So before I talk a little bit about the equity audit and community outreach, any questions about that aspect? Okay. Thank you. So, um, with that, why don't we start with the memorandum, uh, in request that was put forth by uh, by Jillian? And this is a continuation of what is now really the years of work that this town has committed to with an agenda around diversity, equity and inclusion. Um, I know the board is well aware of multiple trainings that have been conducted by the National League of Cities for both the board and staff, and our goal of continuing those trainings into this new year to be able to move into the implementation of the utilization of a racial equity toolkit across all departments. Additionally, we've talked for quite a while about the need to develop an equity action plan. And I don't wanna speak for Jill, but I think what Jill has found in her work is that before being able to um, confidently and clearly execute or create an equity action plan, the best practice is to complete an equity audit for the organization. Um, and that is what, uh, a, a big part of what we're asking for tonight is endorsing the use of these ARPA funds, in this case, one hundred thousand dollars for, um, for the, to, to go out and find a consultant to conduct an equity audit in cooperation with town staff, to be able to then create an equity action plan upon which we can act upon. Included within that request is also the funding for the duration of ARPA eligibility, a fifty-five thousand dollar a year position for a community outreach liaison that can work directly with Jill in the Division of Diversity, Equity and Inclusion to more fully reach out to our marginalized and most vulnerable populations in Arlington to truly be able to make sure that we are including all voices that need to be part of all of our efforts around DEI. So for this first year, we're asking for the approval of one hundred thousand dollars for the equity audit and fifty-five thousand for the position, and then in the future and then in the future years, we would be asking for a continuing of the fifty-five thousand dollars for the community outreach position with further, uh, requests to come for the expenditure of the balance of the funds as are outlined in the framework, likely for many aspects of implementing what the equity audit and equity action plan would call for. So with that, um, Jill, did I, did I miss anything? If I may, Mr. Chair.
You should. No, I think you covered it. Um, I just gonna say, if there's any questions or anything that needs clarification, I'm I'm able to answer that, but yeah, the idea is to get the audit done so that we can start to build out the framework. Um, and with that, I mean, I think we all know what our limitations are in outreach and communication, so this will be a huge help um, to ensure that we're making all that the town has to offer actually accessible to our community members.
Um, thank you, Mr. Chaplin, and, and, and thank you, Ms. Harvey, I think, Mr. Chaplin, what, what I'll do is I'll go through the board, we'll do, um, Ms. Harvey's request first, and then we'll address Mr. Rodamacher, but I'll, I'll go to the board now for questions or comments, but I want to thank Ms. Harvey for the detailed memorandum, uh, outlining of the, the, the request, and that was included in our agenda package. Um, and I will turn to the board now for questions or comments, uh, starting with Mr. Diggins.
I am thrilled, thrilled, thrilled to see this, Ms. Harvey, it, uh, I mean, it just does everything that I would like to see something like this do. Beginning with the audit, because I often say, I mean, we can't tell whether we're doing something unless, uh, we're having effect unless we measure, I mean, and we have to get a baseline, so, so you're doing that, I mean, and, and the outreach, um, um, and engagement coordinator, he's actually a, a member of Vision Arlington was asking me, you know, if, um, we might be able to hire someone in that position, I mean, and I didn't know, and I hadn't really brought it up with the town manager, it was ma- really a matter of just trying to limit how much of his time that I take on Monday mornings, but I had reached out to, uh, colleague, uh, well, not a colleague, but a fellow select board, um, member in Brookline to ask them how their, um, coordinator, uh, was working out, and, and, um, she feels that the position is a good position to have, I mean, there, there are some complications there, but she thinks this is a good thing, uh, for, for us to do. It, uh, uh, I, I hope that we will be able to sustain this, you know, beyond the ARPA funds, I mean, I know that it, uh, the money is hard to come by, uh, in, in this town, but I'll say this about spending in government, we have to be careful about putting government on a starvation diet, I mean, and then having it underperform, and then have people say, well, why do we want to fund government when it doesn't do us any good? You know, so we really have to invest in government, you know, in order to make it show, in order for it to show that it can really do good, I mean, for, for, for the, the, for the public, because in the end, government is us, I mean, and, and so, so, um, I'm so thrilled to see this, and I hope that the person, whoever it is, will come to one of the, um, civic engagement group meetings at some point in time, you know, so, so, um, uh, I, I think this would improve the framework, you don't really need a motion to, to approve anything, I'll move, motion to receipt, but whatever you want me to approve, uh, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, I, Mr. Diggins, I, I think that Mr. Chaplin and Ms. Harvey are looking for a motion for endorsement of the expenditures, so if, if you are, are so inclined, if you want to move to endorse the, the expenditures, that's, that's what we would, uh, look to do tonight.
I'm happy to move to endorse the expenditures, thank you.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Helmut.
Uh, thank you, I'd like to strongly enthusiastically echo everything my colleague, Mr. Diggins, just said, um, you know, that you, we have to start with talking the talk, and we, we do that, this is really walking the walk. Uh, and I know, Ms. Harvey, when we, when we spoke this summer, uh, about your goals for for Arlington, and you talked a lot about this equity audit that you really wanted, I am beyond thrilled that we have the resources to do it. Um, and I know we talked at length about the action equity action plan that you want us to, to work on, that will flow from this. This is the real work, this is, this is the hard work of, of equity. I think that we will learn some things from this audit that are challenging and are difficult, and we need to confront those things with, with an open heart, and with, with an, with open eyes, and with new ways of understanding, we need to listen. I think this will be a really good tool for that. I was glad in your memo that you started out by talking about the pandemic. It, you know, it has shown us that, you know, we are all in the same storm, but we are not all in the same boat. We have different boats, it has been a lot harder for some people than others, the impacts have been far greater, and you're absolutely right that the pandemic has really laid bare the inequities that have always been there and are worse, so, so thank you for your, your vision and connecting those dots as you always do. And I am really excited to see what we learn, and even more excited to see what opportunities we identified to do the really hard work, really effective work that will, uh, help everyone in this town feel like they are part of the town, that they have a voice in the government, that they have a place at the table. Um, so, so thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Helmut, uh, Mrs. Mahan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and, and thank you, Ms. Harvey, and Mr. Chaplin for your presentation and your short and long range sort of vision on this and, and where it's going to go, and I, just for clarity's sake, we're endorsing the one hundred thousand dollar study, and we're also endorsing the position at fifty-five thousand times three. It's not fifty-five thousand one time, it's just for housekeeping, is that correct?
That is correct.
Happy to support, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank, thank you, Mrs. Mahan, for that clarification too, uh, on, on the time periods, uh, Mr. Hurd.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Ms. Harvey, for the memo and all your work on this, um, I'm happy to support this, I know we've been talking about the equity audit for what seems like years now, I, I don't think it's been that long, but it's something that, you know, has been at the forefront of our discussions about diversity, equity and inclusion as the first step to get us where we need to be. Um, so, um, it's good to see, be able to use the federal funds to do it, we do it anyways, but to have an avenue to do this with the ARPA funds, I think is a really good use of the funds. And I know you have a lot on your plate, so I'm happy to support the, the, uh, adding someone to take a little of that off your plate and, and help you get through this, so. Appreciate all your work, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hurd, yeah, and I want to echo my colleagues, um, sorry, thank you for your vision and for, for putting this, um, before us, and I, I am happy to support this and, and look forward to the, to the results and, and, uh, in doing, doing the work that, uh, walking the walk, as Mr. Helmut said, uh, as we go forward, so, so thank you for this, and, um, so on a motion by Mr. Diggins, seconded by Mr. Helmut for endorsement of the proposed expenditures, uh, Attorney Heim.
Hurd.
Yes.
Mr. Diggins.
Yes.
Mr. Helmut.
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. DeCoursey.
Yes.
To unanimous vote.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And I will now turn to the second half of the presentation this evening, which is the Water and Sewer Infrastructure Proposed Expenditure, um, Mr. Chaplin, did you want to go through the, I, I think it might be one particular item this evening, or Mr. Rodamacher, whoever would like to present that?
So I, I will, I'll give a, a brief, uh, overview, and then I think Mr. Rodamacher can certainly answer any detailed questions the board might have. So the board, um, the board will recall that one of the first votes it ever took in regards to ARPA was approving one point six million dollars in water sewer infrastructure spending for the water meter reading system. So that's already been put in place, but that is part and parcel with our ongoing water meter replacement program. So there is one item that's listed in the memo that Mr. Rodamacher put together, listed as water meter replacement. Um, and there's two sums in there, one for four hundred and five thousand and one for three hundred and thirty-seven thousand, which I think adds up to seven hundred and forty-two thousand. And Mr. Rodamacher and I talked about this today, um, though I think he would love to have it all approved tonight. Um, he understands the sort of reanalysis that we need to do based on the federal rule, but in order to move forward with, um, the water meter reading system and to bring to completion this water meter replacement program, we're both very hopeful that we can ask for the board's endorsement of that additional seven hundred and forty-two thousand dollar expenditure on top of the one point six million that had been previously approved by the board. The only thing I would add to that is, in the scenarios that I've already run in looking at how we would get to the ten million dollars for claiming revenue loss within the ARPA framework, this expenditure, the one point six plus the seven hundred and forty-two thousand works well within that without inhibiting our ability to get to the ten million dollar figure, so we'd ask for your favorable, um, again, your, your, your endorsement of that request tonight, and again, Mr. Rodamacher can answer any detailed questions about the program.
Thank you, Mr. Chaplin, and, and thank you, Mr. Rodamacher, for the, the detailed memorandum and, and the way things shifted last week, I, I, I know, you know, well, good news for the general fund, um, it's going to create some challenges in terms of the timing on water and sewer projects, and, uh, we want to work with you on that, but thank you for your, uh, for your patience on that, um. Did you want to add anything to what the manager said, or, or I can turn it over to board members at this point?
Uh, no, Mr. Chaplin covered it, uh, very well, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you, um, I, I will turn to the board, uh, Mr. Helmut.
Thank you, uh, happy to make a motion to, uh, endorse the town manager's recommendation, uh, or endorse to, uh, to endorse the, um, the expenditure for the water meter replacements. Um, and, you know, I appreciate the, um, the carefulness of the thought by, by, uh, the town manager and his staff in reacting to, to the final rule for ARPA, and I think that is appropriate. Appropriate caution right now to, to do this because we have a short-term need to, to get this project done, now given our exposure with the technology. Um, but, but to take a step back and, and look at the rest, so, so I appreciate that. No other question?
Thank you, Mr. Helmut, Mrs. Mahan.
Um, thank you, Mr. Chair, I'll gladly second that, um, you have just one question, sort of clarification question, um, and that's on the, um, private sewer inflow removal. Um, obviously, that's talking about property, not that the town owns, but basement sump pumps of residents.
Correct, uh, yes, for the majority, yes.
Okay, and I'm, I'm just thinking of, oh, wait. East Arlington, abutting, um, the L life, um, what exactly is the two hundred thousand for?
So we have, um, we have been tasked by the D E P to have, um, anybody's private property sump pumps that are connected to sewers uh, in the house to be removed, um, sump pumps that run during a storm that discharge to a sewer often exacerbate the issue of, um, sewage overflow, uh, into, um, streams, so we're tasked with working to remove that overflow, and it, it can sometimes be daunting for residents to, um, to handle all those costs and, uh, on their own, sometimes these are issues they got when they bought a house that, that you create these problems and so forth and so on, so we have a database of where we believe these connections exist, and we're going to be looking to assist residents in um, disconnecting these sources of, um, uh, uh, sump pumps to sewers, but we, we were hoping to be able to offer some financial assistance in doing so.
That's great, I was hoping that it wasn't sort of two hundred thousand to enforce, and, um, all these, e- either long time residents or brand new residents are faced with, um, a cost that they hadn't built in there, and, and it's got, you know, in some cases could be very, uh, expensive, so this would more or less just be to set up a program, um, if it's just two hundred thousand, I'd be happy, but, um, I'll leave that to you and, um, your, uh, department, uh, but I think you may have to revisit that, but, um, we'll see, so I just wanted to make sure that the two hundred thousand wasn't just to enforce, and say we gotta yank this out of here, go deal with it, I'm very, um, pleased to hear that, especially since I think most, if not all of this, really applies to, um, East Arlington, um. So, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Mahan, uh, Mr. Hurd.
Um, thank you for the presentation, I have no questions, happy to support it.
Thank you, Mr. Hurd, yeah, and I'm happy to support this as well, um, so on a motion by Mr. Helmut. Oh, did I miss you, Mr. Diggins, I'm sorry.
You did, and, and I want to express my, my.
I'm sorry, I, I, I got, I slipped the vote here, and, and I had you going first, I didn't get back to you here, my apologies.
That's okay, I, I got National Grid with double pool, so I think I did better than you, sorry, Mr. Diggins.
No problem, no problem, I'm, I'm actually very happy to see Mr. Rodamacher too, I don't want him to feel that I'm only enthusiastic about, you know, uh, equity audits, you know, uh, the great part about being a part of the, the board is that I get to learn a lot of stuff, I mean, and, and I learned enough that I actually really care about, uh, about this, and, and actually, um, uh, my colleague, Ms., um, Mrs. Mahan, they, uh, brought up a question that I was interested in too, so, so we disconnected some pumps from the sewer, where does, where does the outflow go at that point?
We're developing different options to suit different situations, so sometimes it might just go to a backyard, sometimes it might go to a, a, like a a dry well installed in the yard, or in some occasions, we'll let residents connect to our storm drain system. It's not sewer system.
Okay, it, well, well then, so if the, the, the goal of disconnecting it from the sewer system is to stop the sewer overflow situation, and the problem we have is a combined stormwater.
The town, uh, I'm, I'm sorry, the town does not have a combined system, we have two separate systems.
Okay, so then we're not part of the problem, is what you're, okay. So then, if we're not part, I guess what I'm confused about then is that so, so the reason for disconnecting the sumps is so that it's going to a sewer and then be a part of a problem? But then we're not part of a problem?
Well, so, we do not have a combined system within the street, our storm drain and our sewers are separate within the street. Um, what can be a problem is when a sump pump in someone's basement or private property is connected to the sewer, and they are, um, adding clean water at a high rate to a store, a sewer system that isn't designed for that level of inflow. So then, when those sewer pipes are inundated with clean water, they start to back up, and you won't get necessarily sewage backing out into streams, but maybe coming out of a manhole in a street, and then running down the street into a catch basin, and then finding its way into a, a stream or whatnot, so we are looking to remove clean water from sewer pipes so that those sewer pipes can flow as designed and not be inundated. Um, but the town itself does not have a combined drainage and, and sewer system that overflows during heavy rains because they're combined, they sometimes overflow because like this, these private inflow sources of storm drains, uh, of, uh, sump pumps are connected, and those are something we can, we can rectify.
Great, thank you, we, uh, whether I'm smarter or not, I certainly feel smarter after this, so thank you once again.
Thank you, Mr. Diggins, and, and I'm, I'm sorry for the, uh, for the mix up there, um, so on a motion, uh, by Mr. Helmut, seconded by Mrs. Mahan, Attorney Heim.
Mr. Hurd.
Yes.
Mr. Diggins.
Yes.
Mr. Helmet.
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan.
Um, yes, and hopefully we can get D E P to do the same with the C S O discharges in the L life, but I know we'll be discussing that again in the future, thank you.
Um, Mr. DeCoursey.
Yes.
To unanimous vote.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you both for joining us this evening.
Thank you very much.
Next is open forum. Except in unusual circumstances, any matter presented for consideration of the board shall neither be acted upon, nor a decision made the night of the presentation in accordance with the policy under which the open forum was established. It should be noted that there is a three-minute time limit to present a concern or request. Uh, Mr. Chaplin, is anybody who wishes to speak, uh, for open forum?
There's currently two hands raised, Mr. Chair, three hands raised now. Winell Evans is the first hand.
Okay. Good evening, Miss Evans.
Unmute, there we go, can you hear me now?
Yes, yes, we can.
Okay, terrific, I, before I begin, I would like to please beg your indulgence for an additional thirty seconds, I have rehearsed and rehearsed, and I cannot get my remarks below three minutes and thirty seconds, so if that would be okay, I would be very, very grateful.
Yeah, I usually have a soft three minutes, so why don't you go ahead, and if it
All right.
feels like you're getting to a good spot, we will, uh, we won't take a close look at the time.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it, um, Winell Evans, Orchard Place, good evening, everybody. I want to speak about one affordable housing strategy of the draft housing production plan, which this board will be reviewing at the end of this month, and this is to allow two family homes in And this is to allow two family homes in all residential districts by right. The intent of this upzoning is to help Arlington increase its supply of homes, quote, "with a housing type that has traditionally been part of the town's residential landscape, and also to introduce a modest missing middle effort that is compatible with detached, single-family homes," unquote. The traditional housing type referred to here is rentals in one or both units of two-family homes. But we're actually seeing an increased loss of these rental options and the disappearance of housing for the missing middle as new market rate condo duplexes replace our single and two-family housing. Additionally, there is much research that shows that upzoning actually drives up prices. Alan Arthur, president and CEO of a nonprofit affordable developer in Minneapolis, where fourplexes by right were recently allowed, says, "The comment that building housing alone will automatically fix affordable housing problems is absolutely false. You'd have to overbuild for a long period of time. The focus should go to preserving existing affordable housing units, which is much cheaper." Churches United for Fair Housing has found that, quote, "Rezonings are so sure to pass and so sure to be beneficial to developers that even the announcement of a review process leads to rampant speculation," unquote. Michael Storper at the London School of Economics has studied upzoning effects extensively and says that, quote, "Upzoning allows for market speculation to dominate. Skilled people with high incomes are going to move into upzoned neighborhoods and crowd out the middle and lower income people who are living there. This is how blanket upzoning produces the consequence of displacement, exactly the opposite of what the authors of upzoning bills claim they want to produce," unquote. An MIT study of upzoning in Chicago over a five-year period found that, quote, "Upzoning in hot neighborhoods sends a strong signal to the developer community that there is a big market for luxury housing. Property owners wishing to sell get the same signal and begin the process of bidding up sales prices." And a study from the Urban Displacement Project at Berkeley found that, quote, "Because market mechanisms work differently at different geographic scales, at the regional scale, the interaction of supply and demand determines prices, and producing more market rate housing will result in decreased housing prices and reduced displacement pressures. But at the local neighborhood scale, new luxury buildings send signals to the market that such neighborhoods are desirable for wealthier residents, resulting in new demand. By extension, one would expect market rate development to increase displacement at the local neighborhood scale. The materials Don Seltzer and I emailed to you all last week show that these effects are well underway here as R2 conversions take place. R2 conversions are de facto upzoning. And rather than providing options for the missing middle, they are instead removing options from them. I respectfully ask you to keep this consequence in mind as you consider whether to adopt the finalized housing production plan. Thank you for the opportunity to speak, and thank you for letting me run over."
Thank you, Ms. Evans.
The next hand raised is Lynette Culverhouse.
Good evening, Ms. Culverhouse. Just need to unmute yourself.
My name is Lynette Culverhouse. I'm a resident on Draper Avenue and Town Meeting member in precinct 11. First of all, I'd like to thank Ms. Harvey for putting together the DEI audit and the board for supporting it. It's a good start to doing the hard work of making Arlington more equitable and inclusive. On a related matter, I was a signer on the letter sent to the select board last week regarding the BLM banner. There were 81 other signers to this letter, 32 of whom are Town Meeting members. It is very disappointing to see that it's not on the agenda tonight and that this matter is not resolved before the Martin Luther King Day. Town Meeting overwhelmingly voted to display the banner in town, and it's hard to understand why it's not been done yet, a whole year later. All I'm asking this board to do is not to ignore this unresolved issue and the people who so strongly support hanging the banner. There is huge support for displaying the banner in town, and we owe it to each other to publicly proclaim our stated commitment to diversity, equity, and inclusion by honoring the vote made by Town Meeting. I hope to see this on the select board's next agenda, and I would be happy to discuss this with any board member who wants to talk about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Culverhouse.
Next speaker is Elizabeth Trey.
Good evening, Ms. Trey.
Good evening. Elizabeth Drake, Town Meeting member, precinct eight. I'd also like to congratulate the board and Ms. Harvey on the vote taken tonight to support the equity audit and the position of the community outreach liaison. It's very exciting news. Thank you for that work. As we approach the celebration of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. and the Black History Month, I asked the board to acknowledge the letter from the community members submitted last week and attached to tonight's agenda, asking you to resume and complete your discussion related to the Black Lives Matter banner tonight and to heed Town Meeting's unequivocal vote regarding return of the banner to Town Hall. Since July of last year, on four different occasions, town leadership has publicly committed to work with the Human Rights Commission, the DEI Coordinator, and community stakeholders to determine how, where, and when a banner or a similar message could be displayed in Arlington and to develop a policy to define how the Town Hall space should be used for banner display. That's four times. And four times, there has been no follow through on those commitments. Over a year ago, on January 4th, then Chairman Hurd stated some of the last words that have been spoken on this issue by the select board by urging fellow select board members to act. He said, "We made a decision to go through our special Town Meeting, let them weigh in on the subject, and then we would consider the vote of Town Meeting, among other competing aspects of the situation that we had to consider. It is incumbent upon us now to come up with a plan." And later he said, "We should resolve it at the next meeting, if not tonight." And that was over a year ago. And since then, there has been no discussion. You may remember the September 2020 discussion about putting up a different sign so that everyone who entered Town Hall would clearly understand the full breadth of the town's commitment to equity beyond Black Lives Matter. The select board unanimously voted to ask the town manager to display this section of Title II, Article Nine, Section Two, Subsection C of the Bylaw Regarding Protected Classes, so that it would greet all people who entered Town Hall. Originally, there was a large sign attached to the construction fence. But today, I went to the Town Hall to look. And here, I found it on a nine by 11 piece of paper taped to two seldom-used side doors to the side of the main entrance. And in my opinion, this does not take the place of a Black Lives Matter banner hanging on Town Hall. The letter submitted has been signed by over 80 residents, including 34 Town Meeting members. It's an effort to hold the select board accountable to the unfulfilled commitments that you have made to residents. The letter asked you to add the Black Lives Matter banner to tonight's agenda for discussion and to vote to rehang the banner on Town Hall. That's proudly unequivocally reaffirming that Black Lives Matter today and every day in Arlington. And while you chose not to do that, I urge you to do so at your next meeting. And finishing up on a separate note, I wanted to say I'm disappointed to see that in the public participation section of the Select Board Handbook, the use of the word citizen instead of resident. And the ask that people continue to share their address to speak. Both exclude and discourage residents from participating, as is their right. This language was informally done away with under Chair Hurd's tenure, and I would love to see that reflected permanently in the handbook. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Trey.
The final hand raised is Don Seltzer.
Good evening, Mr. Seltzer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Don Seltzer, Irving Street. I would like to speak to the board about the housing production plan. I've submitted detailed comments to the board about the shortcomings of the consultant's report. I hope you will find time to compare this report against the state guidelines of what should be in a housing plan. State guidelines require that the plan evaluate the impact of future housing growth on school capacity. Our previous housing plan devoted four pages to this analysis. This draft report has but a single paragraph which dismisses capacity as being of no concern based solely upon the 2015 McKibben forecast. However, that 2015 forecast made no assumptions about housing growth nor changing family demographics stemming from new denser housing. The recent census shows that Arlington's population is growing far faster than McKibben predicted. We already have reached a population that McKibben predicted we would not see until the next decade. Please consider this rule of thumb. For every 80 housing units that we add, expect to fill up another classroom. I asked the board, where will we build our next school and where will we find the $55 million to pay for? Another failing of this plan is the recommendation to encourage the replacement of single-family homes with two families and duplexes. The report's author has been quite candid that this is not about affordability. It is about providing more choice to upper-income families who can afford to spend $1 million or more on a home, households making more than 200% of AMI, well out of the scope of what state guidelines say a housing plan should be covering. This board has been provided with dozens of examples of recent conversions in which single-family homes were replaced with condo duplexes for which each unit was more expensive than the original home. The residents most affected are the one-third of Arlington households that have an income of between 100K and 200K. This includes many of our first responders and two-income teacher households. For this middle third, smaller, older homes that range from 600K to 800K are attainable. But this housing plan attacks that existing moderately affordable housing base by encouraging teardown and replacement with more expensive duplex condos. The middle third of Arlington is slowly being squeezed out by eliminating the homeownership that is within their means. I hope that this board will make the appropriate revisions to this draft plan prior to approving it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Seltzer.
There are no additional hands, Mr. Chair.
All right, that ends open forum for this evening. I will move on to traffic rules and orders, other business, item nine. For discussion and approval, all alcohol license regulations changes, Ali Carter, Economic Development Coordinator.
Ali is here and should be joining us in just a second.
Good evening, Ms. Carter.
Good evening. Thank you. Ali Carter, Economic Development Coordinator.
And thank you. We got a version of the proposed changes. But if you could walk us through those changes, and then we'll turn to the board for any questions or comments.
Sure. And thank you for the feedback. The last time I came to the board, I took your feedback, brought it back to some of my peers in town in the legal department, in the select board office, and in the Department of Health and Human Services and the Arlington Police Department. So this revision that you see marked up here is a result of review from all those departments in addition to the folks who looked at it before. The pages, you know, they basically, the goal, as stated before, was just to add a little bit more flexibility to the types of establishments that can open and serve alcohol with these licenses. So on page three, there's just some language to state that brewery licenses are allowed by this in addition to holders of common victular licenses. And again, on page four, just a simple addition of brewery license language. This is a request that we get fairly often. And just, people have a hard time finding a space big enough to accommodate breweries. But at this current point in time, there are three different parties looking to open breweries in town. And two of these parties have at least one Arlington resident on their team. So this really is responsive to active requests from entrepreneurs. Sorry, returning to the document here. No suggested revisions on page five or six. It does, I think the most substantive changes are in the physical plant section, section D, which mostly relates to signage and marketing of alcoholic beverages. And we wanted to tie in the section 6.2 of the zoning bylaw, but also change the language to allow that if someone opened a brewery, they could have signage for their own product, but not that a restaurant could or other type of establishment could just have posters or signage for different brands of alcohol. Section E allows for not just waitstaff, but counterstaff to serve alcohol at a point of sale. This again would just allow more flexibility for the type of service and the type of food service business that could open in town. And then, in alignment with other goals that the town has, we wanted to be a little more flexible with recyclable and compostable materials with the service of food and not just silverware. But we also wanted to clarify that we discouraged, you know, paper plates, disposable items, plastic was not what we were looking for. But durable materials that could be reused. And the final item was just, I think, we went back and forth about this quite a bit. The origin of, related to outdoor dining and alcohol service. There was the last sentence of, excuse me, let me back up. It's the second to last line on page seven, before the beginning of section four, stated that all outdoor food and alcohol service shall conclude before 10:00 PM, Sunday through Thursday. I'm sorry, Thursday through Sunday, which corresponded to the weekend and didn't seem to make as much sense as if it said Sunday through Thursday. So after checking and double checking that line with many peers, we reversed those days. So that's a summary of the specific changes. And I hope that wasn't too much detail, but I did want to cover it all. So I'm happy to take any questions anyone has.
Thank you for the explanation on the various items. I'll turn to the board, Mrs. Mahan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Ms. Carter, for, first of all, it's nice to see you on the north side of 11 o'clock. We certainly, you stood the test of time with your stamina. Definitely went through that. Am I to assume, I know we had a conversation about first, second, third offense. The language there. I think we spoke about it. We were going to check on it to make sure that that's sort of in concert with other cities and towns, other penalties. So I take it that there's no red line there, that that's okay to stay the way it was?
Yes, correct.
Okay, and I just want to clarify, because I'm just imagining some possible restaurant managers that the like, when we're talking about the number of alcoholic beverages texts right now. In terms of serving food, it does say in there, it's not necessarily the mandate that you have to use disposable. Disposable recyclable, you can use solid, correct?
Yes, correct.
About with the goal of, you know, moving forward. I'm just like, you know, imagine going in, I'm going to get beat up down at Gillands about straws, paper straws versus silicon versus. The give me the good old plastic. So I want to get my donut straw. So I just want to be able to say that. But also tell people to be mindful of the future as we move forward. That may be ultimately where they, where we go, but that, that's still open enough.
Yes, indeed. And in, uh, until Gillands starts serving alcohol, I think they'll be okay with their current.
They'll, they'll still ask me. I, I still get asked about paper straws. I need alcohol afterwards, but that doesn't mean. But, um, but no, I'm just thinking of, you know, restaurants and sometimes people focusing on one thing. And I just want to be able to provide the correct information. So I, I do thank you for all your hard work on this and putting up with us. At an early hour as you have at a later hour. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Mahan. Mr. Heard.
Thank you, and thank you, Ms. Carter, for the presentation. I'm happy to second the motion. And I, I don't know where they put a brewery in Arlington right now, but if they can squeeze it in, I look forward to going to it. I think there'd be a good market for it here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Heard. Mr. Diggins.
Common ground, Mr. Heard. You put a common ground. I think that's a good space, you know, you know, I bet if I said. I don't look, I don't smoke pot, you know, in support of a pot place, people go, yeah, right, you know, and if I say I don't drink. They go, huh, but, but I don't do either because of a lightweight, trust me, the world is better off because. We just don't need a less inhibited land. I am really happy to see this, you know. Especially the, the brewery part of me, it, uh, it's, uh, yeah, it's exciting. I hope, I hope that works out. Someplace where the common ground or any other place, me, and I'm also happy to see the relaxation of parking requirements because. I think that will make it easier on some businesses and also kind of support our whole notion of, um, of, um, of active transportation. Which, you know, when you think about it, when people go to drink, should they really be getting in the car and driving anyways? Maybe some. Someone come and pick them up. But anyways, this is really good work, Ms. Carter. And I'm not only am I happy to see you before eleven o'clock, I'm happy to see you in January at all. Good luck with everything, all right? Look forward to seeing you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Diggins. Mr. Helmut.
Uh, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Carter, for your work on this and especially for, for doing the, the good luck work with. Your colleagues in other departments. I know I checked in with Health and Human Services about this in past weeks, and I know that you've worked together with them to address. Concerns they had and, you know, it's important to get this right. I think the, the economic benefit to our businesses is really important. But it's also really important that we continue our really good practices of effective alcohol control policy, not, not only to protect. Underage youth, but also to encourage responsible alcohol service and. And, and such. So, so I appreciate that. I do have two questions. Just to help me understand the, the intent of a couple of things, and both of these are on page seven in section E. I, I think it's a good idea to add the, the driver's license verification at the point of sale to confirm drinking age and also the customer's the sole recipient of the beverage. And my question is, because this is just, I just don't know how this works. How does somebody at the point of sale with that ID confirm that the customer is going to be the one who drinks the beverage?
They would have to hand it off to them at that time. It, it would be sort of like a. Check verify, and we went over this a lot, Natasha and I, they would have to. Look at the license, identify the person and then hand that person whose license it is that beverage. As they proceed to sit. You know, additional controls could happen, but at the point of sale is basically, you know, additional monitoring can happen. There's. Always, you know, some. Room for error, but we really wanted to focus on that. The person who gets handed the drink is the person whose license is presented.
Yeah, good. Yeah, I know the handoff makes sense. And, um, I mean, I, I obviously what we're trying to avoid a straw purchases for particularly for minors or people under, underage. Are there, are there other regulations in place that, that prohibit that anyway? And that's probably a better question for the Health Department, actually. Uh, you know, I, I think there are, but I think, I think what you're getting at is that there are other controls that, you know, that we can look at or other. Other server training and policy that, that would address that.
Yeah, the customer, I, I think that the customer is the sole recipient of the beverage. With that specific language. It's not quite so explicit, but what we were trying to get at was that it's a one to one transaction. One person orders one drink and that's what they walk off with. And that you can get a tray or a pitcher or more than one beverage.
No, that actually does make sense, right? Yeah. Okay, no, that, that's, that's plenty clear. Thank you. And thanks for including my understanding about that. And the second thing is just the paragraph below that. I noticed that the, the food being served on either solid reusable recyclable compostable, but doesn't, we've eliminated any reference to beverages. So was, was there an intent to exempt beverages from, from. Those categories, which, which I think could have the effect of, of newly allowing beverages to be served in disposable glassware.
Sorry, I just want to read it again. So that, that I'll, I'll, I'll explain the, the point we were trying to make with the food service. Was just to be a little bit more flexible and accommodating. Again, it kind of relates back to the type of establishment. That would serve you the drink over the counter. That's more like not a fast food. I really want to say not fast food. But like a fast casual type establishment where you would get your. You can get alcohol typically at these places, but you can also order food that comes like on, um, on a metal tray. That has wax paper at the bottom or, um, of perhaps a plastic red basket. That's again lined with wax paper so that the materials are reusable. But it's a little bit more of a casual establishment and not necessarily like a silverware, white tablecloth. Type of restaurant.
Would, would there be any problem with, with. Just adding food and beverages must be served on solid reusable recyclable compostable dinnerware so that. We don't have a loophole there for, for the beverages themselves.
So I think that would go. I really enjoy this type of thing, by the way, this wordsmithing. So I think. Because section, uh, so E two, that is service of food, but E one with service of alcoholic beverages.
No, that's, that's a fair point, you know.
We, we could, we could, if we wanted to. Add a similar. Uh, sentence, it would go in that section.
Yeah. I know, I see, I don't, I don't feel super strongly point about it. Mostly I want to make sure that, you know, there was, there was, uh, since we were changing some of the categories. And I'm thinking mostly at this point, just the environmental. Sustainability implications for this, that there, if there's an opportunity to, to deal with that. But if that's, if that's kind of. Something that could have been raised, you know, earlier and gotten gone into this, I'm happy to let this, you know, to support this as it is now. And if we want to. Possibly revisit that as part of another larger sustainability conversation. No, that's fine with me too. Mostly really, I just wanted to understand kind of what, what the intent was.
Yeah, and it was, it was a lot about the type of establishment, but also tying in those other goals. I think we could. And to be, to be fair, I'm not like fully versed on the food code, the way my colleagues in the Health and Human Services Department are. So it could sit somewhere else, but I could also see that basically. A, the last sentence of. E two as kind of amended could say instead of food must be served on. Beverages must be served in.
Right.
And drinkware instead of dinnerware.
Yeah, um, but you know, I. I, I think my instinct is to let it stand as is now, just, just so that we don't intentionally do, do, do something, you know, in, in this moment that, that has complications that we haven't. Thought about, maybe just as a, as a bookmark to, to potentially look at that later, because we could always add that revision. In a later time, if it makes, I think it makes sense from a sustainability point of view to really look at that with the beverage containers. But probably not to try to monkey with it too much here, so, uh, but that, that's it. Thanks. I, I appreciate the discussion, get it all to me, understand. What we're trying to do here and what the scope of these, these changes are.
Sure, thank you.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Helmut. Um, yeah, and I also want to thank you again, Ms. Carter, for the, the explanation and for the changes here. One question on, on that page seven on the service of food. And again. I support this. I don't know if it's something that we may have to look into or you may have to look into later. It, to the extent that you do have a brewery or beer garden type operation, know a number of them have food trucks. In, in, and so the, the, the food is actually being serviced through, it's almost like a joint venture. From the food trucks that might come on site and just a question if. This would be broad enough to, to cover that situation if it ever comes. It's a hypothetical and it's, it is. You know, I guess it depends on how broad the definition of area is for, for alcohol being served, but. I guess we worry about that when the interest comes in.
I, I think in terms of the alcohol regulations, this would work for that because I was trying to think of that scenario. The other set of rules that would have to be amended, I believe to accommodate, that would be the traffic rules and orders. There is language in there about. Any sort of vending that happens from a vehicle has to be continuous. And if it is discontinued for a period of ten minutes or more. They have to keep it moving. And so I haven't quite tackled that piece yet. But that would be, I think, a next step to consider.
Okay, all right, good. Thank you. Um, so as I said, I support this as well and on the approval. Of the all alcohol license regulations changes, a motion made by Mrs. Mahan, seconded by Mr. Heard, Attorney Heim.
Heard?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Mr. Helmut?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes.
Mr. De Corsi?
Yes.
It's unanimous vote.
Thank you, Ms. Carter.
Thank you all so much. Have a nice night.
You too. Okay, item ten is a presentation, discussion and vote. On marijuana establishment host community agreement license applicant, Calix Peak of Massachusetts. I want to announce it. It's, it's near nine o'clock. We have a few items left. Would members like a five minute break before we start the hearing? Okay, why don't we do that? And we can bring the Calix Peak or arrange for them to come join us, but why don't we start that in five minutes? Um, so we now on item ten. Is it, it just announced the presentation, discussion and vote marijuana establishment host community agreement license applicant. Calix Peak of Massachusetts. There are a number of people here from Calix Peak. I see Attorney O'Connor is here. Representing them. So if you want to introduce yourselves and, um, we have. Let me step back for one second. We have three host community agreements that we can enter into in Arlington. We have entered into two. Last fall, we sent out a notification for expressions of interest. Calix Peak was the only organization that responded. And I've been trying to coordinate with Attorney O'Connor for the hearing date and tonight is the, uh, the night that we're going to go forward with it. So I'll turn it to Attorney O'Connor and then can introduce the team and, and make the presentation. And we'll have questions from the board members as we go along.
Thank you, Chairman De Corsi, and good evening to all of you. I represent Calix Peak and this evening. Erin Cora, Corachillo is the CEO of Calix Peak is on the call. We have Pete D'Agostino from Ten X, one of the consultants, and Dan Linsky, who I believe is in charge of security. For Calix Peak. Uh, you have an extensive application and a, a project information from Calix Peak. They have been in front of your board previously for a host community agreement. Calix, I will give you a very brief overview. Calix Peak is a very experienced man. In the management and administration of retail adult marijuana use. It is a well capitalized company. And I will, to be charitable with respect to the site, which is two fifty one Summer Street, Arlington. Will say that it'll take a tired looking site and significantly improve it with the three thousand square foot building. And seven thousand square feet of parking. You also should have a memorandum dated November twenty third, twenty twenty one. From the marijuana study group, and I believe Mr. Diggins was the select board representative on that study group. And the study group determined that this proposed project is not anticipated to have a significant impact on safety. And operations on Summer Street or the surrounding roadways. There were a couple of issues raised. One of them was a more detailed ingress and egress plan. And a question of whether there would be drilling versus blasting when the new, when what is there, as everybody who lives in town knows, this is the old Getty gas station. Is to be demolished. Those issues I would suggest to you would be better vetted in front of, if, if the host community agreement is allowed. In front of the Arlington Redevelopment Board. Another issue raised was the status of the twenty one E at that site. There was a clean twenty one E for that property. Um, and the Arlington Police Department representative on this committee noted that the experience with Apothica in the Heights. Has been a positive one. And for those of you who are in the Heights, I'm in the Heights several times a week. You wouldn't even know Apothica was there. So I would point out that in two thousand sixteen, voters in Massachusetts approved legalization. Of recreational adult marijuana use by fifty three percent. Arlington's vote was fifty seven percent. Uh, we, you have the opportunity to approve this host community agreement with a top rate company. Take a B four site, which is a vehicular oriented site. And the zoning bylaw specifically says when the town has the ability to take an, a vehicular oriented site and take it, make it some other use. They should try to do that and provide the town with a revenue stream here from the impact fee. And I would also suggest you that the renovation and improvements on this property will significantly increase the property value and the property taxes. So I'd like to turn it unless you have any questions of me, I would like to turn it over to Erin, who will go through the proposal.
Yeah, go, go right ahead.
Erin, I think you're muted.
I apologize. Um, I'm going to share my screen with the presentation if you don't mind. Um, and I want to thank you guys tonight for taking the time to meet with us. Um, I really appreciate it. I believe most of you, as Mary O'Connor said, have reviewed this proposal at length. Um, so I'm going to go through this really quickly because I know it's fifty slides and we've been on here for a long time this evening. So in the. Interest of everyone's time on this call, first let me introduce myself. My name is Erin Crotchlow. I am the CEO. I was appointed in December of two thousand twenty. I believe in the past year, I've met with one of my former colleagues. I have an extensive background in retail. I've been in retail for twenty plus years. My original background is finance. I am an accountant slash ponder. I came out of public accounting and was there for four years before I delved into the retail world. So with that, I wanted to kick off kind of the location. As Mary noted, um, the plan is to obviously. Obviously, it's to tear down the current facility. Um, we're going to review keeping the facility and adding on. Uh, but it may be a complete demolition once we get a local architect in there to see what we could do. Um, the image that I'm showing here currently is what we're building in Swamp Scott, and this is going to be kicked off in April. And this also was, this was a teardown. So this was a building that was like an old bodega slash, slash liquor store. Um, and we tore it to the ground and basically put up this new building. So ideally, this is the aesthetic we're going for, but we would work with local architecture. Architectors in town to ensure that it's the neighborhood. Um, since our last time that we met with you guys, we have signed an HCA in Worcester. Um, and we're starting to build that out in early two thousand twenty two. And as just noted, we've already started our demolition in Swamp Scott. Um, with a go live date that says here in March, it's probably going to closer to April, um, given just the weather and the time of year. Uh, additionally, we are already working, our parking lot is shared with the veterans. So we are currently working with the veterans to do some events with them, whether it be for Veterans Day, Memorial Day, anything like that. Um, I've already started participating in local events with them. They had one in September that I actually personally went to and donated. So it's for me extremely important as, you know, earlier in this presentation, you guys mentioned the Sadler. And things that Mr. Trunglo are looking to do. And to me, that's a huge win. I am the daughter of a veteran. I am also granddaughter of a veteran. So. Super important to me to be involved in the community and especially with veterans and, um, those that aren't served correctly in our. And especially with veterans and those that aren't served correctly in our community. So for tonight's presentation, we're going to kind of go over everything. I gave you a little bit of background on myself. Some aesthetics of the current building. This is kind of our local kind of layout that we have. This is a rendering from our Kansas City store. It's very clean and really simple. Probably not what a lot of people are used to when they think about marijuana facilities. We tried to make this very inviting so that people don't feel off when they come in. A little background again on the company, we are minority owned and we are women run. So most of my management team, I'm about 80% women operated at this point. A little bit additional background on us, we have operations in California, Missouri, and Ohio. California, we have a 250,000 square foot greenhouse and we are opening a retail store in Santa Monica. That was about a four year process. And we just landed the CUP at the end of October. So that is going under construction as we speak. Missouri, as noted, we just opened our first store there in Kansas City. We also are building out an 80,000 square foot cultivation manufacturing facility, and that'll be live in May. We did have an Ohio facility, but we did sell that to a minority investor at the beginning of 2020, once COVID hit, and we kind of were all trapped a little bit more at home. So again, a little bit of background on me, undergrad Widener. I got my master's from Villanova and then I went to Anderson. So I squished that. I worked for FFO Schwarz in Manhattan. I lived in Florida for about eight years. I worked for It Sugar. Some of you may be familiar. It's 100 retail store candy store. I was involved in selling that to BBX, which is a publicly traded company, and then subsequently I moved here. Jen McGlaughlin is my chief branding officer. Jen is a retailer by trade. She has worked at the Gap, American Eagle, Talbot's, and she also has a lot of local owned businesses. Her husband and herself have opened two coffee stores, one in Cohasset and the other in Duxbury, and they recently opened a taco store. And hang on, so if anybody's in the area, definitely check it out. I went there last week. It was amazing. As we noted here earlier, Mary O'Connor is online, and I also have Chief Linsky, who's our security advisor. Chief Linsky will probably jump in later when we get into security, but he is a 27 year veteran of Boston Police Department and has incremental in helping us get through a lot of these safety things as we navigate with cannabis. Also noted, we have investors that are of career descent. Michael Bang is our chief investment officer. Michael has an extensive background with Goldman Sachs, and I kind of lean on him for doing a lot of our modeling and analysis. Dr. Song is our chief medical officer. And as we talk about events or having onsite training, Dr. Song is an advocate of cannabis. He really got involved in cannabis when his father was dying of cancer. He is an oncologist. And it was kind of the way that he entered into this market was he didn't want his father on opiates during his dying days, and he relied heavily on edibles to really have his mindset with him as he was passing on to the next stage of his life. Gwen Chakagawa is my compliance officer. She has everything compliance in this company. She is up to date on the constant and ever changing cannabis rules throughout the country. And we have Mark Miedermeyer, who's in charge of our director of outreach. So he'll be heavily involved if we should win this application of reaching out to the community, whether it be veterans or other organizations, and how we can help and be a good part of the community. Our business model obviously is vertical integration. As noted earlier, we have the location in Worcester. We also have Swamp Scott, and then hopefully this next location. These are some of our current products. We named everything local because we really wanted to be part of the community. Local to us meant what can we do in each community that we're in? And it's always going to be different. It's always going to really go towards what is needed in each community. The current plan is to have four point of sales and our goal is to do 150 transactions a day. We do have 10 dedicated spots currently, and I'm planning to have two of those as online pickup. Additionally, we plan to work with some of the social equity guys on delivery services. And this just goes into kind of the customer appreciation day and how we like really get involved with our customers. And it's also about having community education. So whether that be shutting down for a day and just having a workshop so people that may not feel comfortable can just come in and just talk and just understand. And we can help them and navigate them. And maybe it's just not the right thing for them either, but at least having a better sense of what their options are. I think that's important to get to the community. So again, we're going to go over the site. This is the current site as noted earlier, and this is our plan for the site. The goal here is really to have a refreshed look and have a lot more green space. And that's what we did in Swamp Scott. With Swamp Scott, we also worked with the town to navigate having an easier parking situation as well as travel studies to make sure that there was no conflicts with any kind of traffic that was going to happen. Again, the aesthetic for us has been very clean. You're not going to see a lot of cannabis promoting. It's a simple atmosphere. We really want to make it inviting for everyone. Pete, I'm going to turn it over to you to talk a little bit about the traffic studies that we've done, if you don't mind.
Sure. Yeah. So good evening, board. Good to be before you again. It's great to see everybody. Hope everybody staying safe and healthy. As you know, we've talked about this location previously with the board on a couple of occasions. During the last presentation before the board, we had not conducted the study, the traffic impact analysis prior to the meeting. So in this round of application, we elected to do it prior to that. So the board would have time to look at it. As you know, the sighting of this location, as we've mentioned before, really aligns with what we think town meeting envisioned on the placement of these three cannabis facilities throughout the town. And so we think this is really consistent in keeping with what town meeting had kind of envisioned during the zoning and including the implementation of the buffers, which we all know have been very deliberate in how the town has executed those. So everybody should be fairly familiar with 251 Summer Street. We think it's a great location. And if you could, Erin, just go to the next slide, talk a little bit about. Perfect. So this is just an overlay of marijuana dispensary zoning analysis. This is just how everything lays out in the town. And I don't have my cursor, but you'll see our location with the green star kind of in the middle there. So it's pretty well situated. And if you could, Erin, go to the next slide. This also shows all the compliance with the buffers and so on and so forth. And then you'll see our site circled at the top left. And again, the overlay of the Google Maps. So it's very compliant with all the zoning. You'll see it doesn't hit any buffers, which is what we're highlighting in the top left. In the top left image with the circle around the pink lot, that is, you'll just demonstrating compliance with all the buffers. If you could go to the next slide. This is overhead, just backwards side. At the bottom right, you'll see there's an overhead picture of the site. We would plan to keep the building primarily in the same area and utilize the parking space to the left where you'll see there's a bunch of cars. We'll restripe and reengineer that lot to be compliant with the local zoning and have appropriately sized and marked parking spaces. So there'll certainly be adequate parking. We do have under agreement this entire parcel to include the left lot and the right side of the building as you see it here. So any questions on that? I'm happy to take them or I can take them at the end as well.
Why don't we go through Mr. D'Agostino and then I'll turn it to board members for particular questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
So the safety and security plan, again, I have Mr. Linsky on the phone, so I'm happy for him to jump in. Basically, we're going to utilize Mr. Linsky to come out, review the site, working with Arlington Police to make sure that we're safe and compliant. And really review our security systems to make sure that they're where they need to be. I will tell you, anybody that's dealt with cannabis, these generally turn into probably the most secure locations. Every neighbor should be thrilled to live next door because there is literally cameras everywhere, like my facility in Kansas City has about 62 cameras on a 6,000 square foot building. So there are cameras all throughout the parking lot, all around the building to ensure that everyone is safe, both employees and customers. We'll have security on site all hours of operations. We're going to ensure that they're trained adequately and that we train in accordance with the CCC requirements. Any safety or any kind of disregard to any kind of policies that this company has is grounds for immediate termination. And I take that pretty seriously. Similar to marijuana free establishments, we're going to design the facility to be safe and secure. We're going to have commercial grade alarm systems, again, in conjunction with Mr. Linsky giving us advice of what we need to have. We'll have trackable key cards that limit access to certain areas of the store, specifically the vaults and any kind of packaging areas. And we'll also have panic buttons and any kind of redundant intrusion systems. We'll have backup batteries in place for four to six hours. So should there be any kind of interruption to our service, our cameras will always be on. When I get into seeing the image of the store, we plan to have a secure in-house delivery. So we're going to build a garage within our facility. So anytime there is a delivery, that car will pull into the building. So there will be no kind of activity happening in the parking lot or that anyone can see. So this is what I was just referencing. And we just did this also with Swamp Scott where we just built a garage so that there's no need for anything ever to happen in the parking lot, which is always a concern for the neighbors. So the parking lot, there'll be a button, they'll get buzzed in. There's cameras in here, so everything is tracked. As I noted earlier, I come from an extremely, you know, vigorous audit background. So we do a lot of three way matching with cash. And I also have external auditors that I bring on usually two to three times a year to make sure that we're operating compliantly, not only for ourselves, but from a financial standpoint. I want to make sure everything is ticked and tied. As everyone knows, this is a heavy cash business. So making sure that we're making sure everything is accurate is super important. Employee training, diversion prevention, onsite education. So as noted earlier, Dr. Song is thrilled to come out and potentially educate people that would want to be educated. We'd probably look early on to do those more frequently to get people, you know, aware of what we are, what we do, and how we could help them, but also how we're going to try and help the community. Our onsite education for our employees, they're going to go through a lot of training. We also hire a third party to train our employees to make sure that it's not just us coming up with a training guide. It's actually a cannabis training guide to make sure that we're compliant. We'll work with local vendors to have literature, both onsite as well as in the waiting room where people wait. And if there's any questions, our team will be trained to be able to answer that. As noted earlier, nuisance prevention and diversion is extremely important. So having Mr. Linsky working with the police department as well as ourselves to make sure that we're just following any guidelines or any things that they may be thinking that maybe we're not thinking about. We'll have a track and trace system. Our track and trace system is obviously metric. We use Flow Hub, which is integrated to the track and trace system. Additionally, we use Work, which is a cannabis party, a cannabis payroll provider. And that's also integrated through Flow Hub so that we're able to track everybody down to their number. So everything is very trackable. And again, the nuisance prevention, well, nothing will be tolerated. We don't we don't want to be a hazard to the neighborhood. We want to be good neighbors. The goal is to be successful. If we're successful, the town is successful. And I do not handle anyone that is going to be causing any kind of issues onsite, whether that be our unemployed or someone else. And then the benefits is really, you know, the HCA, a charitable, as I discussed earlier, we do a lot of charity activities throughout the country as noted. Swamp Scott being veterans out in California, we work with a lot of underserved communities. So we work with the Girls Club. We also have my guys go out on a weekend and they built a park. So it was a really fun activity for them, great team building for them, but also an appreciation for things that you're not thinking that, you know, how lucky you are every day. We participate in a lot of neighborhood and civic associations. This building plans to have 18 full time positions. So the estimated payroll is going to be $800,000 to $1 million a year. So we're really, and the goal is to really hire as many local people as possible. Mostly they're going to be salaried employees, generally good paying salary employees, jobs. So having people local is super important. You know, this knows you want to have somebody that's able to go in. Alarm goes off. We want to make sure that there's somebody local to handle it. So having locals on the ground is very, very important. And these were just some of the things I just already had mentioned. This is the Girls Inc. and the building out of the park that we did. In Massachusetts, we work with the Urban League. So really having that social equity is extremely important to me and giving back to those people that may be underserved displaced, especially during COVID. It's been a real challenging time for a lot of people, and I want to make sure that we set people up for success. The Massachusetts market is one of the biggest markets in the Northeast. It's estimated to be a billion dollar market in the next few years. We currently obviously hold a license in Swamp Scott. We estimate that this store should do 5 million to 7 million a year. And estimating a two and a half percent tax range, it's about 125,000 to 175,000 a year, plus additionally, the benefit of the HCA for the town. And again, these are just high level numbers during the presentation, so I won't let you in depth. But this is really just noting where the most of the expenses go. And clearly, it's highly designated to payroll. And these are just the responses that Mary already answered early on. So I'm going to leave that go for now. And then if you guys have any questions for myself, Mary, Pete, or Mr. Linsky, we're here to answer those.
Thank you very much for the presentation. I will now turn to the board. True, before I do that, maybe if I could ask Attorney Hime, I should have done this before the presentation, just in terms of based on where we were in terms of the process here with the HCA. I don't know if there's anything you want to add in terms of process or the compliance with the buffer zones or anything of that nature before I turn it to board members.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I'll just provide a quick reminder for any members of the board that might want to refresh or members of the public that the process before the board is only is really limited to whether or not it will grant a host community agreement to the applicant. We've already granted host community agreements to two marijuana retailers in Arlington. To my understanding, one is open, the other one is not yet open. The board is not obligated to grant an HCA to anybody. But this is now the third round of HCA solicitations that the board has had. To my recollection, this particular applicant has been before the board at least twice before. The process, this is especially for the public's sort of education reminder, the process only begins here. If the board were to grant an HCA to this applicant, the applicant still has to go through the special permitting process, which is administered by the Arlington Redevelopment Board. That process is primarily about compliance with zoning bylaws. So while the applicant has prepared a number of things about things like traffic studies, those things are typically handled in a great deal of depth before the redevelopment board, which was the case with the Pocahontas, is the case also with Esq, I believe. Additionally, there's a parallel process. The applicant, one of the sort of big changes between some of the applicants prior submissions here is they now have, I believe, licenses or HCAs and provisional licenses with the Cannabis Control Commission in Massachusetts, which they didn't in previous iterations. I believe they've already referenced the locations of those. The Cannabis Control Commission also does vetting process, obviously, for anybody who's seeking a license to open a retail establishment or any other kind of license. There's, so there's a lot of layers of review that happen either in parallel or after this process. This process is really about the board using its own criteria to make sure it's comfortable proceeding with the host community agreement, setting forth the basic parameters of what that host community agreement will be. Typically, in the past, what the board has done is charged the town manager and my office with negotiating host community agreement. As the board may recall, we've stuck strictly to the legal criteria established by the state and have not asked for extra payments or more money or anything like that, which happened in some other communities. We've stuck pretty straight narrow to the four corners of what HCAs can include. So unless board members have any other questions, for me, the only other thing I note is that my office had previously vetted this applicant in terms of its corporate structure in terms of its compliance with the site location, all that kind of stuff. Nothing has really changed other than the fact that the applicant now holds more licenses in Massachusetts than they, I mean, has HCAs and provisional licenses in Massachusetts that they didn't previously have. None of those exceeds the number that you're allowed to have in Massachusetts. So the applicant is still in good standing as far as my office is concerned. And then the other information you have is obviously for the marijuana study group. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Hime, for the overview and for your guidance. I will start with Mr. Diggins, who was, had attended the marijuana study group meeting for any questions or comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, so yes, I mean, I was part of the marijuana study group and we had a nice discussion about Kalix Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, so yes, I mean, I was part of the marijuana study group and we had a nice discussion about Calix Peak. And I have to say, we're pleased, you know, we put out a positive recommendation to the board. I will say about the process, one of the things I regret about it is that we can't have the I won't say we can't, but we haven't had the applicants at those meetings because it would certainly be enlightening, I think, to talk with them at those meetings. So I am just going to ask a few questions and then have a statement at the end and potentially a motion. So if you could go to the slide referencing your director of outreach, of operations, community outreach, Ms. Mark Niedemeyer? And on that, it mentions a disadmission statement of the company. So what's the mission statement?
I'm missing where you're seeing that.
Okay, let me see if I can go to it. So.
I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time pulling this up.
All right, I'll go to myself. The slides weren't numbered, so it was a little hard to just kind of specify which slide. So it's where you're introducing the staff and there's Gwen.
Okay. Yeah, so formally, we really have cut back on our staff just to give you a heads up on that. We did a lot of restructuring in 2020. So our formal mission statement is shop local, buy local, be local. And that's kind of very obviously an evolving thing, but that's what the important message behind local is. So it's hiring and being part of the local community.
Gotcha. All right, cool. Thank you. And, and so can you give me a sense of the nature of the outreach that you might do in Arlington?
So again, it's not happy, like reaching out with Mark and reaching out to some of the community activities that are there. I would love to reach out to the veterans, as I noted earlier. That's something that's extremely close to my heart and I'm passionate about. Pete, who's on the phone, is also a former military. So for me, that's extremely important. Also important for us is equity. And I know you guys talked about that a lot tonight. I've already started working with the Urban League and how we could either do some onsite training. What else can we do to help? How can I, as a CEO, develop the next CEO? You know, how can, how do I find the guy that's going to take my job? That's, that's what it's about and finding those people that really have been impacted through cannabis, but also given the recent situations with COVID, you know, a little background myself, my husband's a teacher. So we've watched a lot of what has happened over the last two years and how it's impacted families. And a lot of these children. So super important for us to be involved.
Great, thank you. So from your market research, you know, I'll ask a question then say a little more before letting you answer it, you know, or asking and answering it. I mean, how many marijuana shops do you think Arlington could handle? And I ask you that because I wondered to what extent the, you're wanting to be here is a function of the fact that we have we are at this point allowing only three establishments.
So that's, that's obviously important. Given that there is nothing really close in proximity besides Apothica right now, and obviously the other host community agreement that's out there. Having places that are not served as well is really important. You know, we've been looking at other areas along the coast as well, where there's a ten, ten to fifteen miles, but everybody knows what Boston traffic, that could be thirty, forty minutes. Especially on a snow day. So finding areas that aren't on top of each other and aren't highly populated are important, is important.
So, but I mean, do you think Arlington could handle more than three establishments?
Well, if I'm being greedy, no, if you're going to get right? Because, you know, as you add more, it obviously, it's just going to detract from other businesses. So knowing that we will probably pull a little bit from Apothica, depending on where people are buying from. And somebody else will pull from us, right? That's just the way it's going to work until the market kind of settles and everybody lands with their three recreational licenses, which is all you're allowed to have. So it's going to be a continuing, evolving land, a little bit of a footprint until the ship kind of lands itself.
Gotcha.
Or if I could add to that, if I may. Mr. Diggins, how are you, sir? Good to see you again. It's been a while. You know, I think when we think about the, kind of the market in Arlington, I mean, we have Apothica who really services the Heights area of the town. And then you have Escobar, which would be on the east side, and then Calix really serving the middle of Arlington. I know we talked about this at the last go around. I really feel as though that was the intent of town meeting, to spread them out with the, with the two thousand foot buffer. And I think this meets that intent and it doesn't detract from the other businesses that you've approved in town. I think when I think of Arlington and how challenging it has been to get property and and meet these two thousand foot buffers and actually get these businesses spread out to add a fourth or fifth one could become more challenging because they're going to have to go between two of the entities, whether it's between us and Escobar or Apothica, or whatever the case may be. So I think the, the way this has come together is a little bit interesting. Because I think, you know, putting in the buffers the way the town did, they actually got the result they were hoping for. So I think with that, hopefully the board would move forward with this applicant. And, and then, you know, give it some time to evaluate how those three businesses are operating and servicing the town before they added more.
Thank you. So regarding your, your discipline with respect to your employees. And so across your businesses, have you had any terminations due to employees, I mean, just not following the rules or worse?
I've had one theft, small amount, but yep, was caught on camera, security caught it immediately, and he was escorted off the property.
Just one?
Yep. That was a cultivation. So my cultivation facility in California, we have about sixty employees. It's a highly Hispanic population, super diligent workers. And we just, yep, caught somebody putting something up his sleeve. Cultivation's a little different animal. The way that it works there is everything is weighed every time it goes into every room. So that is the interesting part about cannabis and people worrying about theft. It is so tracked. It's pretty crazy. It's pretty impressive how tracked all of this product is.
And so one last question, and that is regarding the salaries, because there was some concern about that in the study group. And so will there be benefits associated with these salaries?
Yes. We offer a really good benefit plan. We actually cover seventy-five percent. And they're eligible for benefits sixty days after they start. And we have, currently, we just have medical and dental and vision. We are working on a 401k plan. It's an ever-evolving thing.
And so is that part of the total when you say it's a eight hundred K to one million payroll?
It does not include any kind of 401k. It does include healthcare benefits, taxes, et cetera.
Yeah, all right. Yeah, I guess one of the concerns is, well, I don't guess, I mean, one of the concerns is that, you know, Arlington is just a pretty expensive place to live in. And so, so with eighteen employees, being eight hundred K to one, one, one million, it's still going to be a little tight, being well, rather tight, maybe for, for, for someone, you know, to live here, me, and work there. But, you know, it's the market's what it is, me, and and I it's not
Just the, so those eighteen are hourly, right? We always open it up where if it's someone who, you know, college kid who just wants to put in three hours after school. So we expect that there's, you know, there's always a demand fluctuation in the evening when people are leaving work. So it's great when the college kids want to work for you, like from four to eight. Because it gives them the opportunity to make extra money and then it's not a full-time job. The full times are really more the security supervisors, managers, assistant managers. And it's, you know, a forty, forty-five hour job a week, but I believe the pay is, 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 is very good.
I mean, so I hear you in a second. It's not a deal breaker for me. And so I'll ask the chair, I mean, is this time for a motion?
Well, what I, what I was going to do is have questions first, Mr. Diggins, and then I can return in the order if there's a motion, if that's
No, I'm happy to ask the sequencing, you know, so because sometimes I'm all, all about the questions and then I let it go and then someone makes a motion, it's like, oh, I should have done that. I mean, so, so I'll just end with a comment, and that is to say, I am really happy to see you back. You know, and I've told the story a few times, being in the first vote. I was, I did not vote for approval of Calix Peak. And, and Mr. Hurd had made an argument, being for voting in the affirmative. And I thought about that argument a lot when I left, and I did regret not voting for, for you all. The reason I didn't was because I had very much wanted to see another establishment in the east because I felt the east could handle it. And that the entity that was going for it was very close to the two thousand, just didn't quite make it. I'll also add that I was one of the people that voted in the special town meeting for the amendment that would have eliminated the buffer, because I really just kind of wanted to see more market competition. And given that the east, we voted two to one in precincts three and four, for allowance of marijuana establishments. Me, we, the notion of NIMBYs would have not really helped much water for me. So that was my rationale was that I was hoping that by, by not voting that, that someone would find another establishment in the east, meaning and hopefully it would have been been you. It didn't work out. I really appreciate that you have hung in there. You've been really respectful throughout the entire process. You have a good track record in and so, so you can tell where I'm going on this, especially since I was on the study committees. So thanks for entertaining all of my questions and also to my colleagues, thanks for tolerating all the time we've taken. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Diggins.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Diggins. Mr. Hurd?
So Diggins, I don't recall what my argument was, but it doesn't look like I needed in this meeting. No, I'm going to be brief in that this is, I think, the third or fourth time that we've got a presentation by Calix Peak. I've been impressed by the presentation every time that's come before us. The first time, obviously, there was an issue with the buffer and Apothica was an established business. And then I did vote for Calix Peak the second time around. I like this site. I think, I think it's a good site for it. I think when we first had community host agreements before us, it was still the time period where we envisioned lines down the street of cars going to these establishments. But, you know, I've been in Apothica, it's not more than one or two people in there at a time at this point. And I don't envision that there'll be major traffic issues in this location. It is a location that used to be a very well-known service station run by well-known people in town, but it's been depressed for more than a few years. And I think this would be a good addition to the neighborhood right in that location. So and again, I'm very impressed by what I see from Calix Peak, that you're a very professional company and you come prepared. And you are in fact persistent and you have a very strong commitment to serve the town of Arlington and the residents here. Since you got many, many calls, I got many calls as a chair, and I know Steve has as well. So I'm happy to move this forward. I'm happy to finally take these HCA agreements off of Attorney Heim's plate, because I know that it's been a lot of work on with, for him and his staff over the past couple of years. And I think we're in a good place with the three that we hopefully will approve as of tonight. And I'm happy to see you guys back. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hurd. Mrs. Mahan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll try to match Mr. Hurd's brevity, but it might not make it, anyone who knows me. I just have, I think, four questions around onsite security. Chief Linsky's role. And three to six months after, if you are successful, this establishment opens. Who, meaning what position, or if you already know who the person is, will be the daily onsite security supervisor?
So we obviously haven't hired anyone yet, so I won't, I don't know who that person will be. So I apologize. Mr. Linsky, I'm happy to have you jump in and kind of go over how you're involved with us and help us with that.
And can I add, when you do hire the person, will Chief Linsky be involved?
Uh, yeah. And also he'll be involved in training them.
So thank you for the question. So my name is Dan Linsky. For those of you who don't know me, I'm a recovering cop. I was a cop for twenty-eight years in the city of Boston. And now I've been recovering for about almost seven, eight years now. I was the chief of the Boston Police Department when I left my service with the city. And my most comforting event, I was in charge during the Marathon bombing attack. And had many of your officers from Arlington come over to help us in a bad day in Watertown. I met with Chief Flaherty and had conversations about this location. My job is a security consultant. I am not going to be the day-to-day security manager. Although what the team and Aaron has asked me to do is to do more than what my, my team designs the physical security standards, the access control programs, where we put cameras, what type of cameras, help people sign in and sign out, policies, procedures, and all of the day-to-day operational procedures. I will not be overseeing day-to-day operations of security. I will work with the team to determine who that will be. Vet that person, make sure they are well-trained, well-equipped, and well-prepared to do it, although I will be at their right hand. One of the things the team has asked me to do is to go outside the four walls of the facility to make sure that one of our clients leaves our facility and goes down the street to Arlington Catholic and uses the parking lot to use products. And somebody takes a photograph of that, a picture, a video. The police interact with that individual, we get a report of it. They can contact the security manager or they can contact me. And that person is no longer welcome at any Calix Peak facility in Massachusetts. We value what communities allow us to do and value the licenses they give us. And if anyone wants to not obey the rules, they're not welcome at our facility. So we've got a good neighbor agreement with everybody. I'm working day-to-day with the team to set up the policies, procedures, training. Make sure the security manager is well-suited, working with them on individual investigations if we get one of the events where an employee is diverting product or we have an issue or concern. My job is to work with the security manager that we pick in the Arlington Police Department, any other, whether it's Cannabis Control Commission or the city zoning board or anyone, to make sure that all of the information, issues, the concerns of the area, and if there's an investigation needed, we do it. We also, it's great to have fifty-two cameras that record twenty-four hours a day. One of the things we do for our clients is kind of compliance. So I go in and pull video, random videos of different ages, different days, hours, types, and, and see whether or not everyone who is on board is complying with what we said we would do for rules and policies. There's limited access to the safe, right? However, if sometimes people get lazy and people prop a door open and people who shouldn't be in there are helping carry things out, we go in and look at video and if that's the case, we first discipline, train, and if not, remove. The other things we do with our clients are secret shopper training, where our team will go in, try and use fake IDs, see if our security team that's in-house is working well or not working well to address issues of diversion to youth in the community. So my job is not to be the day-to-day operations manager, but to help quarterback that team and support them going forward. I, I look at it as the Bill Belichick of the Calix Peak security team, where I'm coaching and directing and hopefully bringing in a new Super Bowl this year against that evil man in Tampa Bay who left us. And I, I didn't talk until I was three. My mother thought I was deaf and mute and had me tested. And now she says she can't shut me up. So I'll shut up. And if you have other questions, let me know.
Well, I just wish, which Coach Belichick gave after-game interviews, the way you just gave your presentation. No, no, I appreciate that. And then I understand the motto, mantra, if you see something, say something. And my daytime job is a court reporter. But when that fails, especially around public safety, construction, you know, those types of entities that abide to that, it has, you know, some really serious consequences. And what I've seen when it's failed is when something has been going on that isn't safe, whether it's not safe to your employees, whether it's not safe to your patrons. And there's nobody trained there that can recognize that situation, that that's not safe, whether it's in terms of running a business, whether it's in terms of you know, how you dig up You know, how you dig up against a rubble stone wall and workers go underneath. And the workers don't know that they put themselves in safety. Um, so my thing is, um, I guess I would just leave it unless you have anyone had any kind of quick, brief thing to that. I'd really stress the um, sometimes people fall into, oh, see something, yeah, I'll see something, say something. But you you need to have someone um onsite that is qualified uh to recognize that versus a college student. And I'm not putting that down. That's that's coming in, working four to eight or five to nine or anything like that, so.
You're you're absolutely correct and um that's what my job is to do to make sure that the team there is well-versed to deal with any situations forward. I've kind of made a career off of that. Um, the other thing we've talked to the chief about is. Uh, there is some technology available where our video cameras could be uh easily accessed by the Arlington Police Department anytime they wanted them. Through some technology that's available and uh we've offered that if if need be um to to make sure that they can actually do their own kind of check-in and peek if if need be. Or in the case of an emergency going forward, we want to train our staff to deal with all kinds of emergencies, you know. I don't anticipate uh robberies. However, uh if there's a robbery, take it. We can take what you need. We've got a bunch of cameras. We're gonna work with the Arlington Police Department to get you out of there. We're gonna train our staff how to make sure they don't put themselves in harm's way over a bunch of product. Uh if somebody's desperate to do something, we've also designed our facility to hopefully have you go to the other two facilities in Arlington. If you want to do a robbery, because ours is a little more security uh enhanced and and we're uh deterring people from doing that. But I agree with you. We need to prepare people for all hazards and um that's not something uh Aaron and the team takes lightly. They're very serious about making sure we keep our clients safe and our team safe.
Thank you. And um the last two things, really just don't expect comment here because I'm just putting it out. It's goes sort of beyond um our scope here, uh but I know you and your team and Attorney O'Connor will be addressing this. Um, just as you move forward, I know when you designed the building and um. Uh level the site to whatever plane you do. Um, I'm not well-versed on flooding impacts up um. In this location, except for when we have those really quick flash floods um that, you know. So I I know that's not before this board if you do move forward. Um, but I just would put a plug into that to um, as I know you will, have your team look at um. What this building, it seems like you're putting it pretty much in the same place, adding the garage, ten-car parking lot. Um, but as you move forward and come, if you do, for the appropriate uh body, I just wanted to put the pitch in. Um, and lastly, I know it's a little. Small little thing. Um, I know one time that one of the previous hearings, it drove me crazy because it was probably said sixty times. But just moving forward, and this is a transcriptionist to me, I just like word search um city or town. And, you know, and just make sure like if you're going to a city, it says, you know, bye-bye city ordinances, city zoning bylaws, stuff like that. Um, you did, I did hear Mr. Daggis and he said sit town meeting, well-versed with it, he knew everything there. It's just a small little thing, but um uh I just like moving forward with other cities and towns. I just have, you know, whoever your really good admin person is, just saying, you know, okay, we're going before town, let's search city. And vice versa. So it's no big, not at this meeting, but I know we had a previous meeting. I only saw it once in all your submissions and your PowerPoint, so that's not bad. But um I know it's a pet peeve, but to me, like when you come into a community, if you recognize what their former government is and and are consistent. That really gives me a sense that they know where they're coming to. They've done their research as you have, so. Um, with that, I will thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Then thank you, Mrs. Mahan. Uh, Mr. Helmer.
Thank you. Thank you for your thoughtful presentation and all your legwork. Um, I appreciate some clarification on the intention, because the way I've read this, the full breadth of your materials is a bit of a inconsistency. That I might probably just misunderstanding about your intent about whether you would retrofit the existing facility or do a tear-down. Uh, because I just kind of saw saw different things in different places. I mean, if you could not only answer that, but kind of explain your business rationale and, you know, what what you'd really prefer to do and why.
Um, well, some of this is gonna come down to supply chain and as I'm sure everybody knows right now, supply chain is extremely disruptive. Um, and just getting people on-site is really challenging. Um, so this, it's gonna come down. Originally, I think the plan before I started um was always to be a tear-down. Um, I've visited the site multiple times. I've met with Mr. Panchetti. And if we can, I prefer to retrofit it, um build off of what's already there, still make it gorgeous and beautiful. Um, but maybe mitigating some of the noise to neighbors from tearing down a building. But we have to see what we can possibly do. So I don't have the exact answer and we'd have to go um get architectures to do that, architectural drawings.
Okay.
But I know the plan originally was always a tear-down. I'm leaning towards not it being tear-down, so it was a little quicker.
Okay, so that's kind of up 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 in the air.
Yeah.
Are you confident that in either scenario, you can fully execute the security, the mitigation for traffic, the green space? Uh, and everything else that that you're promising?
Yes. The building size won't change. It's just whether or not it comes down and goes up or I could retrofit it to still be in that same area.
Okay.
So I'm not worried about any aesthetics changing. It's really gonna come down to the speed of how we can get this done and what what I'm really working with, right? Once we go in there and actually have an architect come in and a contractor come in, I don't know what the bones of that building even are. So that's that's kind of why I'm I'm in between.
Yeah, no, that's that's fair. Thank you. Um, can you say more about what you mean about green space? I think that in 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 municipal government that has sometimes a specific meaning uh implying public use. So I'm not sure that's really what we mean here, but I'd be happy to know kind of what what you think about what that and what kind of benefit um to that to the community.
Um, I don't know if it's a community benefit. It's it's a community benefit, just adding more trees, adding some grass, making it a little more beautified. Than it kind of is right now, which is a little bit of a concrete jungle. Um, just making it a little bit more inviting.
Yeah, sure. Okay.
But no, it won't be anywhere where anybody's gonna sit or loiter or anything like that.
Yeah, yeah, that that's fine. Yeah, green space often implies a park, you know, or bench or anything. So yeah, okay, great. Um, and my final question, and and this is a question and I think in a caution, I just invite you to elaborate about this. Um, you know, I noticed one thing I really appreciated in your application is you talked about your your strong commitment. To only marketing to people over the age twenty-five and you even cited some good brain science of about why it's a good idea to wait. Until you're that old before you initiate marijuana use and that from my day job, um I spent many years working in addictions and public health. Um, you know, that's right on. The delaying is is a really good idea. This thing goes for drinking. Uh, so I appreciate that. One concern that I had um is talking about your outreach to military veterans and the materials. Talk about the potential um advantages of of cannabis use. Um, and and I I think the caution I have and the invitation I have for you to elaborate is. Um, you know, that's a population that is not immune to substance use disorder. And in fact, uh rates of substance use disorders in the military veteran population range, but they could be as high as twelve, thirteen percent in veterans who have served since two thousand and one. So there can be a vulnerability, particularly for veterans who have co-occurring PTSD um and and other uh disorders. And self-medication, you know, with with um alcohol, cannabis, with other drugs. Um, is it something veterans will turn to, but what they really need is treatment for their for their PTSD symptoms. So, you know, my my concern is that the outreach isn't just marketing about how cannabis could be beneficial. But is honest and is balanced and is medically grounded in uh good information. About, uh, you know, on on that topic and and um and genuinely encourages people. Um, to not use your product if it is going to interfere with their mental wellness and is going to uh. Per to to put them at higher risk for addiction or for recurrence. So I'd I'd like to know your thoughts on that, just like kind of feel better about your approach when you talk about that outreach.
Yeah, so as I noted earlier, um, one of our um owners, uh investors is a doctor. He's an oncologist. Having him come in and and meeting with veterans groups and talking to them um is high on his priority list of things to do. Um, and obviously, he's a doctor. His his goal is not to be there to push pills or push drugs or push us even per se. It's really to educate um and help them navigate what is the best course for them. Um, and you know, one of my Santa Monica meetings, um a local brought up and she was a nurse. Can you give out free, like a little binder so that somebody that goes home and tries something can write down what those symptoms, like what happens? Like if I took an edible and it did this, well, maybe that's I don't want it anymore. And how do you find that right balance of what's best for that person? Because every person is different. Every age group is different. Females react differently than men, just like with alcohol. So making sure that they're we're we're educating based on the science and the facts is important and not just pushing it because it's a profit. And as far as the marketing, you know, a lot of the marketing that happens in this industry right now is a lot of email and and texting, right? I mean, it's the world has changed. Everything is flagged. Obviously, I can't prevent a twenty-one-year-old from coming into our store. But I can turn them off from being on our email list. So whether we're promoting markdowns or promoting a special event, we can turn them off from that. Um, so that would be the intent there is just flag that button so that anybody that's under twenty-five, we're not marketing two percent. Again, I can't prevent them from coming in, but our goal isn't to get a twenty-two-year-old in the store every day.
Okay, yeah, thank you. I appreciate the responses. Um, now that you've given any further questions, my colleagues have really covered some of the ground um that I was going to. So turn it over to you, Mr. Chair.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Helmer. And I also want to thank the Calix Peak team for coming in again. Mr. Daggistino has been a frequent visitor at our meetings. He's back with us again today. Just a couple of questions and and one had to do with the, you mentioned online pickup. I'm just um wanted to hear a little bit more about security for those type of transactions and and um. You how that would differ from the customer showing up to the site? Um, if if it if it differs at all in terms of of going into the building or the interaction um with with your staff.
Yeah, so the parking is just so that they can come in, they show their the front desk, their online order, and they could just pop in really quickly and grab it. Versus sitting there trying to browse, figure out what they want. Um, someone like myself, I know exactly what I want. So I hunt down where it's at and if I have to drive forty-five minutes, that's where I go to get it. Um, and it's just easier to walk in, grab it and be out the door. So mitigating traffic and also mitigating too many people in one place, especially given COVID, um and taking people's time into consideration is super important.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, it's similar to the Dunkin' Donuts app that, you know, many, not me, but my my kids have where they hit an app on the phone and order their stuff. And they walk in, pick it up and go. Um, however, you you walk up to the store, the security outside will check your ID to make sure you're twenty-one. And it's a valid ID and that you have the person ID, you'll then go in and go to your uh quick order pickup line. And we will again check your ID to make sure you're the person and it matches the the response. So um we still the same security metrics. It just, as Aaron mentioned, it it helps with timing issues, parking and traffic issues. Um, and it is all an internal system that's well-regulated cyber-wise.
Okay, thank thank you for that uh determination. And the other thing I wanted to ask about, and this came up previously when uh Calix Peak was before us, just. While this is a B-four zone, it is surrounded by a neighborhood and and I believe there was discussion about what you were doing in Swamp Scott. Because I think there are residences uh nearby that facility, what you did there, now what you found as you're getting closer to opening. That you would do with neighborhood outreach for this site if if uh you were selected.
Aaron, you want me to go through what we did there a little bit or you?
Yeah, so it's really a communication thing. Um, and Pete can jump in, but we, um, once we were approved, it was, you know, Pete Pete will jump in on on his meetings that he's had. But our our contractor also reaches out every week to tell them what's going on, if it's going to imp traffic, if there's gonna be extra noise, anything that matter. Like we we've given them a three-month timeline, but every Monday, if something should change over the weekend, you know, we had snow last week, so things got delayed. We get an email on Monday morning out to all the neighbors just to give them a heads up of what's going on. And then Pete, if you want to jump in?
Yeah, it it Aaron, that that was a great summary of what we're doing now and and Mr. Chairman, prior to even beginning construction. We uh I don't know if you know our site in Swamp Scott, but the back of our building to the nearest resident is about twelve feet. Uh, it's very, very close. Uh, we are the only business in the area. We literally sit in the middle of a residential area with no other commercial uses next to us. And uh we've had an incredibly good experience. There's a shared parking lot with the VFW, but that's that's all one uh parcel, if you will. Uh, we've had a great interaction with the neighbors uh and it's just about communication, like Aaron said. We've met with them on-site. We've done tours. We did, you know, site plan visits. We we did a pre-construction meeting on-site with the contractor. They have the contractors, you know, direct contact information. So just I I think when you're communicating with people at a high level, they appreciate that, they understand. Construction can be frustrating at times, uh but we try to limit that as best we can. And we do a lot of that with trying to set the right expectation as to what is coming up. Um, and and generally, once these are open, they're they're very, you know, very smooth and as you guys see with Apothica and other places. Uh, but you know, we understand construction uh can be frustrating, especially in New England during the limited construction window, when everybody's trying to get stuff done. And so that's how we we've just been very proactive. Uh, and then since construction started, um our project manager sends out emails through the town. Yeah, there's a, there's actually a a email chain that includes the town and the direct abutters. And they send out updates as appropriate with updates to schedules and things. So it's about being proactive initially and then executing against it once we're actually on-site.
Great, thank you. Um, that's all the questions I had. What I wanted to do is allow the board to ask questions and then we can move into a phase now. If we're prepared to make a motion, I'll go through in the same order and go back to Mr. Diggins.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I am happy to make the motion and given the um the gravity of this. But this of this um motion, I would just want to make sure that I get it right. So so I'm gonna ask you and or, you know, Mr. Heim to give me some guidance on the wording of this motion.
Uh, Attorney Heim, do you um? Have any suggestions on a uh wording of a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you. I think the appropriate motion would be if you're inclined to act favorably towards the application. That the board uh 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 grant a host community agreement to Calix Peak uh for the location. Uh, under the terms of their application contingent upon the successful negotiation of uh the specifics of a host community agreement. Uh, between the town manager uh through the town council and Calix Peak. Uh, frankly speaking, the the actual host community agreement itself is fairly straightforward. And this is now the third time we've gone through it, so I don't think that would take long. But I think you'd essentially be approving uh contingent upon successful negotiation of the terms of the agreement with the uh the manager. Which we would then uh make sure that we bring back to you guys to have executed.
Well, thank you, Mr. Heim. That certainly simplified things for me. So 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 I'm gonna try and reduce that down to a a sentence. So I would like to um make a motion to to grant the host um community agreement contingent upon. It um a whatever negotiations we need to do in order to make this successful.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Diggins. Uh, Mr. Hurd.
Again.
Mrs. Mahan.
Are are we voting on the motion right now? Are you?
No, just any comments on on, no, we have a motion in a second. I don't know if you have any further comments, whether you're you you support it or nothing further and you're ready for a vote. I just wanted to go down the line again.
Okay, no, no, and you're not. Just thank you for the presentation. Thank you, Attorney O'Connor. Um, it's nice to see you. And um you always come in very well-prepared and as does whoever, whomever you're representing and I definitely appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Mahan.
Thank you, Mrs. Mahan.
Mr. Helmer.
Nothing further. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, and I just wanted to add, I didn't want to say it in the questions phase, but I was, I had voted for um to approve a HCA previously when Calix Peak was here. I'm glad you came back. I appreciate your persistence and the thorough presentation. I I think um Chief Linsky has added a lot to the discussion here in terms of the security measures and and working with our Arlington Police Department. If if this goes forward, so appreciate your presence here tonight and and Mrs. Mahan said, Attorney O'Connor. Um, always well-prepared for these meetings and and we appreciate that. And um so I certainly um in am willing to support this with my other colleagues. And with that, on a motion by Mr. Diggins, seconded by Mr. Hurd, Attorney Heim.
Mr. Hurd.
Yes.
Mr. Diggins.
Yes.
Mr. Helmer.
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan.
Yes.
Mr. DeCoursey.
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Okay, congratulations. And I know there'll be a lot more interaction with the town and for Mr. Degas Dino. I don't think it's the fifth time, but fourth time's a charm.
Thank you very much.
I appreciate the board's time. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you, everyone.
They say.
Okay, so that concludes item 10. Item 11 is a discussion of the Select Board Handbook. And I will turn it over to Mrs. Mahan. We had discussions about this previously and believe she brought it up at. Some meetings back in 2021. So I'll turn it to her and have a discussion. We may have to come back with specific language, but I wanted to. Turn it turn the meeting over to her on this on this piece.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have discussed this many times, so. Really just two things I want to accomplish. The first thing is to. Whenever someone takes out papers for Select Board, that part of the informational packet they receive along with any. Voter data on disk, a copy of the Select Board Handbook. So it's kind of a guide of. Sort of a very lengthy job description. And then. You know, upon successful candidacy election. Just sign a little face sheet that says, I have received and reviewed the Select Board Handbook with the understanding is. If you just pick it up and look at it, that can qualify as review. Not not saying you have to review this, but I think it's really something that Mr. Greeley and previous board members put a lot of time into it. To that end, my second request would be as since this was when this was first created. Except for myself, we have a totally new Select Board. And I was hoping that. In the next whatever amount of months, six months, eight months. If I know I've had conversations, Mr. Helmuth, and you know, there's been some things more like housekeeping. Issues, things like that can go straight to Ashley, but then also maybe sometime in the fall or next spring. Also have an agenda item discussion of how do we bring the Select Board Handbook and make it more current? You know, there may be things in there that we can condense and revise, and there may be things that are not in there. That we should put in there. So two part thing, which is asking my colleagues. If we could do the first part of it, which is just give it to the town clerk or have it available electronically and say. Please include this in the informational issues should anyone take out papers and then. Just, you know, if you've already seen some things at a housekeeping, if you can get it into Ashley. If you've seen some things missing or something that needs to be condensed down, maybe put it on your own. Take a list cheat sheet and maybe bring it up in the fall or next spring. So I guess first I would ask, I'd like to hear from my colleagues thoughts on that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Mahan. Mr. Hurd.
You, Mr. Chair, thank you, Mrs. Mahan. So happy to, if I hearing you correctly, Mrs. Mahan, like a motion to authorize the town clerk to give any. Any person taking out papers for a seat on the Select Board, a copy of the Select Board's handbook. And then, yeah, I didn't get a chance to dive into the handbook too much before this meeting, but I think. I would definitely be agreeable when putting a future meeting where we have, when we know it's coming up to for comments, just perusing through it. Just the number of licenses, the number of licenses that are taken for all alcohol is incorrect. I think. Ms. Dre had talked about the open forum, we had changed the wording on that. Informally, we had done so and we, I think we've referred it to it as the open forum for about a year and a half now plus. So we can certainly update that language as well. So I think that's a good idea to for us to all take a look at the handbook and. Just recommend any updates as necessary to make it current.
Thank you, Mr. Hurd. Mr. Diggins.
Yes, I'm definitely supportive of giving it to candidates and I would like to get to work on on. It some more. I mean, it's very good. It's very good, you know, and but there are certainly some things that I would like to discuss, you know. And 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 add more so than than take away and and. And I can't imagine being chair without reading this, you know, and we'd like to. Certainly definitely add some things, you know. So I would like to have a meeting, you know, to work on this sooner rather than later. Of course, that's up to to the chair to decide. And and I'll simply point out that in appendix two on page 60, this mention of a utility poll working group. Maybe, maybe we could do something with that, you know, so anyways, that's it. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Diggins. And Mr. Helmuth.
Yeah, I I think these are both great ideas. I will say as the most the newest member of the board, I read the handbook when I was considering running. It helped me understand what the job was. It helped me actually had a played a substantial on deciding for sure that I was interested in it. I read it again after I was elected and saw just how outdated it was in some areas. So, you know, I would suggest, I'd be happy to support the motion, I would suggest if we proactively provide this to candidates. Although I happen to think that we have a really good candidate for reelection for the open board seat coming up. But but if there are future ones that it have a some kind of a disclaimer or informational disclaimer that. That the document is in process of being updated, you know, for for corrections and updated or forthcoming. Just because we know it's been a long time since it's been revised. And to that end, you know, I wonder if, you know, a working group or subcommittee of two board members might be. Appropriate to just organize the flagging of this. I mean, there's, I think that Mr. Hurd suggested there's, you know, some of this is housekeeping. Maybe Mrs. Mahan said this, the housekeeping updates, but the experienced board members here particularly will. Will immediately be able to spot things that are that are out of date. And I think maybe the newer board members like myself and Mr. Diggins, you know, might be in a good position to. Think about what's missing, you know, think about what could be helpful to to people who are, I mean, I'm still, Mr. Diggins is an old hand, I'm still learning the ropes. So, you know, that so, you know, some kind of a mix might be good, but but perhaps with the goal of. Pushing out some of the updates and corrections that are administrative early, you know, and then really digging into document to see how can we make it stronger and better? You know, might might be an approach. But but I think it's great that that Mrs. Mahan brought this up again because it's. It wasn't incredibly, even though it was outdated, it was a very useful document to me and I think not only to potential candidates. But for for residents who want to understand this this office and its function. Another thing I learned running for the office is talking to people. So I'm running for Select Board and they, I would get this look. And, you know, they would, you could tell they wanted to understand that most people really don't spend a lot of time thinking about what we do and why shouldn't they? You know, it's 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 unusual. It's not if you don't come from this area, there aren't select boards in other states, you know, so. You know, I think that it could be a useful document that once it's cleaned up, we could even promote more proactively as an educational piece for. For residents about what the function of this office is. So. Ra ra.
Thank you, Mr. Helmuth. Yeah, and I agree. So why don't we take, we can take action on the first part. Tonight as 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 part of the motion. And then I think it makes sense. I'm happy to put this on for discussion, but I think I think maybe what I'd like to do is. Maybe ask board members, take a look at at the handbook, if there are things that we can change right now and then we can. Put it on for for further discussion, but I think Mrs. Mahan, maybe right in terms of a more extensive. Look at it probably is is later in the year, but but let's let's try to try to get moving on that. So so I'll take a, well, the motion, I'll take it as a motion by Mrs. Mahan, seconded by Mr. Hurd. To provide the handbook to anybody taking out papers and and then we will schedule something before. Over the next month or two to revisit this in terms of timing for particular items. So with that, I will turn to Attorney Heim for the vote if everybody's clear on on what the vote is in terms of what we'll do in the short term. Okay. So, yeah, so Attorney Heim, we can take the vote on that.
Okay, Mr. Hurd.
I was laughing, Mr. Chair, because I was thinking to myself, how you might want to update it right away to say how horrible the. The position of Blackboard is for any potential candidates thinking of calling out papers, but I know you're a lot more ethical than that. Yes.
Mr. Diggins.
Yes, the meeting started 7:15 and ended at 12:15. Yes.
Mr. Helmuth.
Yes, and it's too late, Mr. DeCoursey, you're already you're already committed.
Mrs. Mahan.
Thank you, Mr. Hurd, for making Attorney Heim giggle. I think that's the second time since he's been at one of our meetings that. Yes.
Mr. DeCoursey.
Yes.
Yeah, it's both.
Okay, thank you. All right, item 12 for discussion, future Select Board meetings. So right now we only have one more meeting scheduled, which is for January 24. So if you could look at our calendars, I'm gonna suggest one thing for February. If February 7th, it will be two weeks out, that actually works better on my schedule than starting something on the 14th. It does create an issue the week of the 21st because I think that's a holiday week, but just want to ask board members to take a look at their calendars. That 7th is one date that I would like to have a meeting on, but I'm open on other dates in the month.
57, because either way, I mean, we're going to have a three week gap, right? Because either we would do the 14th, which we have three week gap between now and between the 24th and the 14th. Or we do the 7th and and it is one way to get out of a Valentine's Day meal, but no, let's not the 14th.
Oh, just historically in procedurally for the office, we need two meetings in February.
Yeah, so yeah, it looks like the 23rd or the 28th, that's.
Yeah. I'm sorry, Mrs. Mahan, go ahead.
If I had to pick one, I'd like 23. Just because it's, you know, enough time for the office for things that they have to get on, but I'm also okay with the 28th. So whatever the rest of my colleagues think is best for them.
Well, the office needs more time, you know, than the 23rd. I mean, I mean, that's fine, me, otherwise I was just assuming the 28th. But if there's technical reasons for doing the 23rd, then by all means.
No, just just when people come in, if they're told they have to wait later, I mean, they want everything done sooner, I need this right away, you know, so. Just for the office to to continue the office functioning and doing the business administratively, what they need to do. I think going from 7 to 28, that's too much of a stretch of time, that's three weeks. Because people come in and, you know, they can't say, well, you you could have done this two, three months ago and they're like, no, but I need it by the next 12 days. So just having worked in there, I would put out 7 and 23, but if it turns out to be 728, that's fine. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Hey, thank you. How is the 23rd? And that does spread it out roughly every couple of weeks. Is the 23rd good with other members? Okay. Now in March, I mean, we don't know Attorney Heim is going to be updating us at some point in terms of what's on the warrant, what we need for. Here warrant article hearings and that will take up a lot of our work in in March. I think right now we've scheduled two meetings and we see what the warrant looks like and we may have to schedule more. So what? How does the 7th and the 21st look for 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 March?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, and then and I would say, yeah, let's be prepared, I mean, to do all the Mondays. Because last year we ended up, we go on, I think, like at least six meetings straight because we had a pretty intense. Well, pretty intense warrant. And and if we finish early, can get our report out early, I know that it would make a lot of people happy.
Okay, all right. And I think at this point, I don't know if we need to do April, I think February and March, and we'll see where we are. In in mid-March in terms of what our schedule is, so it would be February 7th, February 23rd, March 7th and March 21st. But with the understanding, we may have to leave some nights open depending on how how the warrant article hearings go. Okay, all right. So that's, Ms. Mahan has has those states, we don't need a vote on that. And that's that's what we'll go with now for our published published schedule. Next is item 13, request for discussion of Black Lives Matter banner, Elizabeth Ray, Jason Street, Mr. Helmuth.
Thank you. So I'd like to move receipt, but but also. If depending on how my colleagues are feeling about this, but with the referral to the chair. You know, I think that I think that would be good to close the loop on the discussion and. You know, I went back, I wasn't on the board when this was last discussed roughly a year ago, but I read, I attended that meeting virtually at the time and I read the memo. And I think that the memo that Mr. DeCoursey and Mr. Kiro circulated. You know, raised some some reasonable questions that need to be resolved before action could be taken. And I think that, you know, a lot of this had to do with integrating what has become informal practice with the. Sign regulations for Town Hall that were adopted, you know, many several years ago. So I think there's some integration work and some thought that needs to go into this before the board, you know, has an actionable proposal in front of them. So I'm also cognizant of the work that we have to do. And, you know, I appreciate the residents' passion for this. I also think that, you know, there's just a reality that that the board has a lot of business that we we have to get done. And we can't always put things on the agenda at, you know, on the last day that the agenda is finalized. So, you know, I think that it's not being on the agenda tonight doesn't mean that we don't think it's important. But, you know, we have to juggle a lot of a lot of priorities, so. I'm open to amendments of this, but and especially for my colleagues who were there, who were on the board before before me. But I might start with something like move receipt and a referral to the chair. You know, to organize study and discussions. With the intent of, you know, bringing this topic back to the board for discussion and and some kind of action at a future date. Again, you know, work work with that, I think, in a way that you think is 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 productive.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Helmuth. I'm going to go down. That line here, Mr. Diggins.
Well, I was talking to that, you know, and yeah, I'm fine with discussing, you know, and I like me and Mr. Hurd comments on. Motion and I could see how we deal with Town Hall as being one of those sections to maybe add to the handbook. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, I'm Mr. Hurd.
Yeah, that's fine of me. I think just to clarify, I think the discussion to have is generally how we use Town Hall.
Yes.
A discussion specific to this request. And then I think once we come up with how guidelines for Town Hall, then however we handle. This request and any similar requests falls into that line.
Yeah, that is my intent. Thank you, Mr. Hurd.
Thank you, Mr. Hurd. And Mrs. Mahan.
No questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And and, yeah, and I think. As Mr. Helmuth just clarified, I mean, that. If I go back to the memo that we had discussed some time ago, there was discussion of development of a policy and that's that's. As Mr. Hurd said, a starting point, so I'll support the motion as well. And I may look to create a subcommittee to look into this and report back to the board. So what I may do is put this on for either the next meeting or first meeting after that. And but if members are interested, if they could contact me and then I will put it on the agenda and have further discussion at the next meeting. So on a motion by Mr. Helmuth, seconded by Mr. Diggins, Attorney Heim.
Mr. Hurd.
Yes.
Mr. Diggins.
Yes.
Mr. Helmuth.
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan.
Yes.
Mr. DeCoursey.
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you. Now, new business, Attorney Heim.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I actually have a few items of new business. I just want to raise the board's attention. I'll try to hit them quickly. First, I want to let the board know. I'll try to hit them quickly. First, I want to let the board know that I engaged the Mr. River Watershed Association about CSOs, the town engineer, and conducted a preliminary review of the current MWRA CSO reports. And I just want to thank Mr. Heron from Mr. River Watershed Association for pointing us to share so much information and insight, which I think will be helpful for myself, the manager, the chair and vice chair, as well as others, including the SAVI, like Brooke Group in the coming days and weeks as we get ready for comments. To know that other board members, I'm actually, the board members know what I'm talking about. Secondly, I just also want to note that there was an initial conference of counsel regarding the UGAR 40B matter, where there is both an applicant and a butters appealing the ZBA's decision, which I know is of great interest to members of the board and a lot of other folks. Attorney John Witten, our special counsel, is representing the ZBA. And while there's not a lot to report right now, I just wanted to know for folks, general information, and it probably take a long time before the matter goes to hearing before the HAC. And that there may be initial opportunity for some mediation, but as Attorney Witten represented to the HAC, it's really important to us, the butters, that their counsel have a seat at that table. Third, I just want to thank my staff very quickly, particularly Peter Buckley, for his help in a long litigated case in which summary judgment was recently granted for Arlington Public Schools. And then finally, I also want to note that Deputy Town Counsel Mike Kenningham is joining the Civic Engagement Group on January 13th to talk more about warrant articles in advance of the closing of the warrant. I had the pleasure of joining the Civic Engagement Group at a previous session, so it's a terrific opportunity for folks to learn a little bit more about filing warrant articles and to spend some time with Deputy Town Counsel coming in. Thank you, folks.
Thank you, Attorney Heim. Mr. Chaplin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Given the hour, I'll be very brief. First, I want to say thank you to the DPW for their great effort on Friday in addressing the snow removal, obviously working early morning and long hours, immediately responding to the storm, and then again overnight on Saturday, doing more crosswalk clearing to make sure that throughout the Mass Ave corridor and Rowway corridor, people could get around as easily as possible, doing that snow clearing effort. So big big thanks to the DPW, and at least the preliminary forecast says there might be more to come early next week. So we'll see, we'll see what the future holds in that regard. Additionally, I did want to mention that in coordination with the chair, we did discuss bringing the goals back tonight, but as we looked at the agenda, I think we well predicted how long tonight's agenda would go and did not put the goals on tonight's agenda, but will plan to bring them back on January 24th to the board's consideration. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chaplin. Mr. Helmer?
Thank you. No new business.
To Diggins?
Thank you, Chair. And I'll say that picture on the town's website of the snow plows is awesome. It, so they did a good grabbing, and I like that picture a lot. And Mr. Heim took my thunder, and so I'm happy when the town council, I mean, promotes something that I'm thrilled about, and that is the the warrant article workshop. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Diggins. Mr. Heard?
No new business.
Mrs. Mahan?
No new business. Thank you.
Okay. I have a couple of items. One, Mrs. Mahan and I and Mr. Chaplin attended the Long Range Planning Committee meeting last Friday. We have another meeting scheduled for January 28th with the news that Mr. Chaplin reported earlier in terms of the increase in lost revenue through upper funds that will change some of the the figures going forward. The governor's budget is due to be released between now and the 28th, and we're still trying to develop consensus. The town manager does have a requirement to issue a preliminary, well, I'll call it a preliminary budget, is a budget document on the 15th, and we're trying to help him with that process. But I expect that we'll have a further report probably in our first meeting in February, as to how things are going on long-range planning. I also want to say on the CSL issue, I think board members received a copy of the report that MWRA issued in terms of the water quality standards. Attorney Heim referenced that. I think what we're going to try to do for either the next meeting or well, the next meeting, I think, is to invite the MWRA representative from the MWRA to our meeting to discuss the issue in ways that we can support them in locating funds and finding solutions and work with the town manager, the vice chair, and Attorney Heim on that issue. But February is a critical month for the commentary to the report. And there was a feeling that to gain, try to gain some insight and work cooperatively with MWRA, we might be able to achieve that. Whether they come to a meeting or not, we'll find out, but we're going to do that outreach. Two other brief things. I apologize, I know the hour is late. I want to thank Senator Friedman for, there's an issue that has come up at AYCC with certain families that are covered by Blue Cross Blue Shield. There are issues on reimbursement for some clinicians where Blue Cross does not reimburse for clinicians that are not independently licensed. Other health insurers cover that. And it looks like Arlington now will be included in a pilot program at Blue Cross Blue Shield where they will reimburse for those services. And it's it's a, it's a big thing, one, for reimbursement, but two, for families in need who are Blue Cross subscribers, they are on longer waiting lists because the number of clinicians was more limited in terms of who could reimburse. So that is potentially really good news for AYCC, and more significantly, for the families in need in terms of what their wait time is. And I just heard that over the weekend, so I wanted to thank her for that. Last thing is, Mr. Diggins and I had talked about there will be a parking pilot program that is going to be before us. Going to try to fit it in the next meeting for discussion, not for action, but the proponents are working towards getting input and bringing something before us. So that's, want to acknowledge that. It is something that a year ago, I said to the proponent of a town meeting warrant article that if she agreed to withdraw the warrant article, we would have, bring her in to present before the board. She did make a brief presentation last spring, but this will be more of a full-blown presentation. I'm looking for a presentation commentary for the board, from the board, not immediate action, because it's complicated issue, but at least to receive the study, and Mr. Diggins is working on a with the proponents, I believe they want to do a forum for town meeting members in precincts 2, 3, and 4. So that's something to look for later this month. So that is my new business. We do have one last item. It's not on the regular agenda. It's an executive session. It's a very brief executive session, but I don't anticipate we will just be coming out of that to, for purposes of adjournment. The executive session is to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant aid requirements, namely, the approval of executive session minutes of December 15th, 2021, and December 2021. If you could look to, Mrs. Mahan, her motion on the executive session.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move to go into executive session for the purposes you just described. And when we adjourn from executive session, we will adjourn concurrently with our public meeting.
Thank you. Do a second?
Second.
Okay, the motion by Mrs. Mahan, seconded by Mr. Diggins, Attorney Heim?
Mr. Heard?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Mr. Helmer?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes.
Mr. DeCoursey?
Yes.
We're in executive session.